Very quickly, if we use the side exits. And would urge that you consider that should it become necessary. I will call on the town clerk to read the call for the meeting and the constable's return.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Worcester S.S., to either of the constables of the town of Berlin in the county of Worcester. Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town, qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs, to meet at the Berlin Memorial School in said Berlin on Monday, the second day of May 2011. Next, at seven thirty o'clock in the evening, then and there to act on the following articles or in relation thereto. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting up attested copies thereof as per vote of the town in said town, seven days at least before the time of holding said meeting. Hereof fail not and make due return of this warrant, with your doings thereon, to the town clerk, at the time and place of meeting as aforesaid. Given under our hands this eleventh day of April in the year of our Lord 2011, Board of Selectmen Judith Boomen Chairman, Thomas Andrew Vice Chairman, Valerie J. Bradley Clerk, a true copy attest, Howard H. Spalding Constable, Worcester S.S. Pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Berlin by posting up attest copies thereof at the town hall, the town offices, and the post office twenty days before the time of holding said meeting as within directed. Howard H. Spalding Constable, April 12, 2011.
I would call your attention to page eighty-six in your town report facing the beginning of the warrant, which has a few items of information about how we usually conduct the meeting. I particularly call attention to the fact that you are asked to give your name and address when you start to speak before the meeting, so people will know who's talking. And also, in the same paragraph, always be brief. And I'll try to do the same. The selectmen in town council are sitting in front of me down here, Town Clerk Eloise Salz, to the right of me on the platform, and the members of the Finance Committee to your left, who will be making many recommendations in the course of the meeting. Let's go to Article One, to see if the town will vote to fill all vacancies and choose all necessary town offices not required to be chosen by ballot or to take any action relative thereto. Val Bradley.
I move that Article one through seven, let me start again. Articles one through seven, I move to approve the motions as printed articles one through seven of the warrant for this meeting.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the motions as printed under Articles one through seven of the warrant for this meeting. So you will see those motions printed. I will say that right now, as if you have a modification of anything in the town report that you want to speak on or add to, this is the appropriate time to do that. Also, any questions about any of these articles or any of these motions? Anything to be said further on this motion? Finance Committee recommend the financial things that are included there? Finance Committee recommends this motion? There's nothing further to be said, I will ask you to vote. The motion is to approve the motions as printed under Articles one through seven of the warrant for this meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Okay. Article eight, to hear and act on the reports of any outstanding committees or take any action relative thereto. Are there any other reports that someone wishes to present at this time? There is a report from our new food pantry in town, which the town clerk has available and will be happy to share with anybody that is interested. If I hear nothing else, I will pass on to the next article. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or borrow or transfer from available funds or otherwise provide all necessary sums of money to deprive the town's expenses for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2011, and to determine the salaries of the town offices for that period or take any action relative thereto. Under this article, we will be dealing with the, most specifically, with the recommendations of the Finance Committee in their report, which began, the budget begins on page eighty-one in your town report, pages eighty-one, eighty-two, and eighty-three. The motions that are made under this will be dealing with the figures on those pages. At this time, I will call on the Finance Committee if they want to do an introductory statement before they start the motions. Scott Schultz of the Finance Committee.
Just like to direct your attention to page-
You're gonna have to be a little closer to the mic and a little lower.
I'd just like to direct your attention to page seventy-five, that is, the Finance Committee report, and also page eighty, which is the budget summary. So what you'll see on that is the, what the increases are overall for costs in fiscal year twelve. It'll initially look very staggering, because you see a seven and a half percent increase between FY eleven, FY twelve, but most of that increase is related to the Tohoto Assessment for the new school building. At the town meeting last year, the original budget that was approved, the school building had not been approved yet, so that has the additional funds for the Tohoto Capital Assessment. If you exclude that, the actual budget increase, the actual operating budget, is two and a half percent. This compares to 1.6 percent last year. It was quite a challenge this year to balance this budget, as you'll see on these several items from the state aid, which has been going down, Worcester County retirement, health insurance, which is under Chapter 32B, and of course, one of the biggest things is our assessment from Tohoto, as more Berlin students are going Tohoto relative to the number of students from Boylston. And that has resulted in nearly eleven and a half, eleven percent increase at the Tohoto Assessment. However, at our other schools, BMS is down 0.5 percent, and the Asabat Assessment is down three percent, significantly helping overall for the education assessments. The, one thing I want to mention is that we will later, on Article forty-nine, because of the Tohoto Capital Assessment, going back several years ago, we are asked to put free cash into stabilization to be later used to help offset the tax rate if a new Tohoto was built. So in Article forty-nine, the Finance Committee will be recommending to transfer $100,000 from stabilization to offset the tax rate, to reduce that overall increase to the taxes from the capital assessment. That will require a two-thirds vote, so we hope you do stay around to support that. Thanks.
Mr. Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $697,900 to cover items one through forty-nine in the Finance Committee's FY 2012 budget.
Motion is made and seconded to raise and appropriate the sum of $697,900 to cover items one through forty-nine in the Finance Committee's fiscal year 2012 budget. This is basically the whole of page eighty-one and all of the items on it.
This figure represents a two percent decrease from the FY 2011 budget, mainly in the, actually, all from the reserve fund. We have historically not been using our whole, all of the reserve fund. As a matter of fact, last year, we used only about a third of it. So we reduced it from $77,000 down to $50,000.
Are there any questions of the Finance Committee in regard to this page of recommendations? Hearing none, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Aaron Mancuso of the Finance Committee.
I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,141,369 to cover items fifty through seventy-three in the Finance Committee's fiscal year 2012 budget, and to appropriate from the inspector's offset receipts amount, account, the sum of $105,000, $105,000, five-hundred, to the following line items. Line item sixty-four, plumbing and gas inspector wages part-time, thirty-one thousand. Item sixty-six, inspector of wires wages part-time, fifty thousand. Item sixty-seven, fire inspector wages part-time, twenty-four thousand, five hundred. And to appropriate from the rescue squad's receipts reserved for appropriation, the sum of eighty thousand to the following line items. Item fifty-nine, rescue squad wages part-time, twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and five. Item sixty, rescue squad incentive, seven thousand, sixty-nine. And item sixty-one, rescue squad expenses, forty-four thousand, oh-two-six, in the Finance Committee's fiscal year 2012 budget.
The motion is to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,141,369 to cover items fifty through seventy-three in the Finance Committee's fiscal year 2012 budget, and to appropriate from the inspector's offset receipts account, the sum of $105,500 to the following line items. Item sixty-four, plumbing and gas inspector wages part-time, thirty-one thousand dollars. Item sixty-six, inspector of wires wages part-time, fifty thousand dollars. And item sixty-seven, fire inspector wages part-time, twenty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. And to appropriate from the rescue squad receipts reserved for appropriation, the sum of eighty thousand dollars to the following line items. Item fifty-nine, rescue squad wages part-time, twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred, five dollars. Item sixty, rescue squad incentive, seven thousand, two hundred, sixty-nine dollars. And item sixty-one, rescue squad expenses, forty-four thousand, twenty-six dollars, in the Finance Committee's fiscal year 2012 budget. And I will assume that all of these items that we have read total up to the $1,326,869? Okay? Anything further that the Finance Committee wants to add in regard to this motion? Does anyone else wish to speak on the motion? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Scott Hawkins of the Finance Committee.
I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,659,303 to cover items seventy-four and seventy-five in the Finance Committee's fiscal year twelve budget.
Motion made and seconded to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,659,303 to cover items seventy-four through seventy-five in the Finance Committee's fiscal year 2012 budget. Anything that the Finance Committee wants to add? Anyone else want to speak to the motion? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote.
I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $555,847 to cover items seventy-six through eighty-seven in the Finance Committee's FY 2012 budget, and to appropriate from the transfer station sticker and recycling offset receipts account, the sum of $75,000 to item eighty-five, transfer station expenses, and to appropriate $7,798 from general cemetery receipts, and $600 from sale of lots, to item eighty-seven, cemetery expenses, in the Finance Committee's FY 2012 budget.
Motion is made and seconded to raise and appropriate the sum of $555,847 to cover items seventy-six through eighty-seven in the Finance Committee's fiscal year 2012 budget, and to appropriate from the transfer station sticker and recycling offset receipts account, the sum of $75,000 to item eighty-five, transfer station expenses. And to appropriate $7,790 from general cemetery receipts, and $600 from sale of lots, to item eighty-seven, cemetery expenses, in the Finance Committee's fiscal year 2012 budget. Does the Finance Committee wish to add anything to that? Anyone else want to speak on this motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Bill Tomasino.
I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $26,175 to cover items eighty-eight through ninety-nine in the Finance Committee's FY 2012 budget.
Motion is made and seconded to raise and appropriate the sum of $26,175 to cover items eighty-eight through eighty, through ninety-nine in the Finance Committee's fiscal year 2012 budget. Anything further from the Finance Committee on that? Anyone else? If not, I will ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Aaron Mancuso.
I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $116,462 to cover line items one hundred through one oh-six in the Finance Committee's fiscal year 2012 budget.
Motion is made and seconded to raise and appropriate the sum of $116,462 to cover items one hundred through one hundred six in the Finance Committee's fiscal year 2012 Anything further to be said on this motion? Anyone else? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Scott Hawkins.
I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $272,051, and to appropriate the sum of $9,617 from the septic loan receipts available for adoption, to cover lines one oh-seven and one oh-eight in the Finance Committee's fiscal year twelve budget.
Motion is made and seconded to raise and appropriate the sum of $272,051, and to appropriate the sum of $9,617 from the septic loan receipts available for appropriation, to cover items one oh-seven through one oh-eight in the Finance Committee's fiscal year 2012 budget. Anything further to be said on this motion? Anyone else? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote.
I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $352,844 to cover item one oh-nine in the Finance Committee's FY 2012 budget.
The motion is to raise and appropriate the sum of $352,844 to cover item one oh-nine in the Finance Committee's fiscal year 2012 budget. You want to speak to this motion? Does anyone else want to speak to it? Lynn Ryan of the Regional School, of the Asabat School Committee.
Lynn Ryan, Central Street. I just want to make sure you folks pick up two things. One is a building project or a repair project that we have going on. There's just one page, just gives you a synopsis of where we are and where we're headed. And we do have a separate booklet up back for Asabat. Just quickly, the overall budget, and I've always told you we need to go on gross budgets, is up 2.37 percent. Combination of student shift and application of tuition dollars means that we're down 2.96 percent, or almost an $11,000 decrease from last year.
Anyone else wish to speak to this motion? If not, the motion is to raise and appropriate the sum of $352,844 to cover line item one oh-nine in the Finance Committee's fiscal year 2012 budget. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Mr. Schultz.
I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,501,937 to cover items one-ten through one-eleven in the Finance Committee's FY 2012 budget.
The motion is to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,501,937 to cover items one-ten through one-eleven in the Finance Committee's fiscal year 2012 budget. Do you want to speak to that further? Does anyone else want to speak to this motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote.
I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $933,265 to cover items one hundred and twelve through one hundred and eighteen in the Finance Committee's FY 2012 budget.
The motion is to raise and appropriate the sum of $933,265 to cover items one-twelve through one eighteen in the Finance Committee's fiscal year 2001 budget, 2012 budget. Anything to further to be said on it, Bill?
This is an increase of $34,000, 3.8 percent, and is virtually all due to an increase in the health insurance premiums.
Anyone else want to speak to this motion? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. I've never seen a whole budget go through unanimous vote. I'm gonna have to retire from this job so I can be the crank, no. Okay, that completes the business under Article nine. Article ten, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to grant to River Bridge North LLC, a Massachusetts Limited Liability Company, with an address of 65 River Road West, Berlin, Mass., 01503, a non-exclusive permanent easement to install, inspect, repair, renew, replace, operate, and maintain subsurface utilities, including a whole bunch of stuff, within the right-of-way of River Road West. Tom Andrew of the Selectmen.
Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize the Board of Selectmen to grant to River Bridge North LLC, a Massachusetts Limited Liability Company, with an address of 65 River Road West, Berlin, Massachusetts, a non-exclusive permanent easement to install, inspect, repair, renew, replace, operate, and maintain subsurface utilities, including water, pipelines, wastewater treatment, and distribution facilities, electric and telecommunications utilities, and other necessary appurtenances thereto on premises within the right-of-way of River Road West, bounded and shown as utility easement area, 2,500 plus or minus square feet, on a plan entitled "Easement Plan of Land 64 River Road West, Berlin, Mass., Worcester County", consisting of one sheet prepared by Waterman Design Associates, dated February 2, 2011, on file with the town clerk, on such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen may
The motion is made and seconded, and as it mirrors the article, all the words seem to be matching. I will read it again for you right now. Tom, you want to speak to this?
I'm sorry, I'll just speak briefly. This involves, as it indicates, an area under, a surface area of 2,500 square feet. This is in the vicinity of the south of Berlin Rotary, and it is to allow, as it indicates, subsurface utilities to be placed in connection with the River Bridge development that was voted last year.
Is there anything further to be said on the motion? Does the Finance Committee have a comment on this first? No.
Mr. Andrew, could you expand a little bit on permanent easement, as opposed to a ninety-nine year lease or a ninety-nine year easement? Why is it permanent?
Question in regard to the use of the word permanent. Mr. Andrew.
Yeah, permanent is forever, ninety-nine years is less than less, but, you know, in order, in order to create something like this, in order to secure financing and so on, the proponents had requested a permanent easement. It is under conditions that the Selectmen will establish, so for instance, if it involves ground opening and the like, the Board of Selectmen will be responsible to establish conditions to assure that that does not interfere with the use of the public way, and that it's restored to an appropriate condition after it is done. It's also our understanding and our advice that utility easements of this kind are
Are there others that wish to speak? If not, the motion is to authorize the Board of Selectmen to grant to River Bridge North a Massachusetts LLC, a Massachusetts Limited Liability Company, with an address of 65 River Road West, Berlin, Mass., 01503, a non-exclusive permanent easement to install, inspect, repair, renew, replace, operate, and maintain subsurface utilities, including water pipelines, wastewater treatment- including water pipelines, wastewater treatment and distribution facilities, the electric and telecommunications utilities, and other necessary appurtenances thereto on premises within the right-of-way of River Road West, bounded and shown as utility easement area, two thousand five hundred plus or minus square feet on a plan entitled "Easement Plan of Land Sixty-Four River Road West, Berlin, Mass., Worcester County", consisting of one sheet prepared by Waterman Design Associates, dated February two, two thousand eleven, on file with the town clerk, on such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen may determine. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article eleven, to see if the town will vote to enact Chapter eighteen of the Town of Berlin General Bylaws entitled "Stretch Energy Code for the Purpose of Regulating the Design and Construction of Buildings for the Effective Use of Energy pursuant to Appendix one-twenty double A of the Massachusetts Building Code, seven-eighty CMR", the Stretch Energy Code, including amendments or modifications thereto, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk, or take any action relative thereto. And then we have the lengthy, specific bylaw that's being proposed. Motion under Article eleven, Judy Boomin.
I move to enact the Stretch Energy Code as a town bylaw as described in Article eleven with the following change. The new section shall be designated Article eighteen instead of Chapter eighteen.
Motion is made and seconded to enact the Stretch Energy Code as a town bylaw as described in Article eleven with the following change. The new section shall be designated Article eighteen instead of Chapter eighteen. Judy?
The Stretch Energy Code is a set of building code requirements providing a higher standard for energy efficient than the state-based building code. There is a one-page sheet on the back table if anybody wanted to see more. The reason that we're doing this is that it is part of the requirements to become a green community. And if we become a green community, we can get grants to become more energy efficient.
Does the Finance Committee have a comment on it? Does anyone else have a question or a comment? I have a question. Is it going to make building more expensive for people? I just have to get that one out there.
Can I ask our building inspector, Larry Brandt, to answer that question?
Building Inspector Larry Brandt.
Hi, I'm Larry Brandt. I'm the building inspector for the Town of Berlin. I live at fourteen Brigham Street in Humboldtston, Mass. And the answer to your question is yes, it will make it more expensive. They figured it would cost about twenty percent more for residential construction, and that twenty percent based on the adoption should come back through the energy savings over a period of time. There has been some studies done on this that are available, should anybody want to research it more. The code itself is a code that is a little bit more strict than what's existing now in the seventh edition of the Massachusetts State Building Code. It will become a code that will be mandated in the next building code, which should come in the next two to three years. This is based on the new International Residential and International Building Code that the state of Massachusetts has chosen to accept with amendments, Massachusetts amendments.
So, in other words, it's likely to become mandatory within about three years anyway?
That's correct.
Anyone else that wants to speak? Walter Vick?
This whole idea, in my opinion, is very, very desirable. In its way, we're all gonna have to go sooner or later, and hopefully sooner. But it's been a long time since I studied on this issue, and I'd like to ask a proponent of it exactly. Tell us what the green community is, what are the goals, what are we trying to accomplish to become a green community, not just if we do this to get grants? I mean, what is it gonna amount to? What percentage of the energy use does the residential sector take? And therefore, over the long term, how much is this gonna save our town and people in it? And then, I guess I'm hearing Larry say if somebody builds a four-hundred-thousand-dollar house, it's gonna cost how much more?
Approximately twenty percent.
So, another eighty thousand dollars?
On a four-hundred-thousand-dollar.
On a four-hundred-thousand-dollar house. Well, I hope somebody gets some grants, because one of our big problems is low-income people being able to get housing today, so I don't know how we can work that out. But I'm really interested in this green community concept. Worked on it for thirty years at different places, and wonder if the Selectmen Boomin could tell us all about it, so we can be looking forward to helping out in the future.
Anyone want to speak to his question? Judy?
There's been a verbal typo. It's not twenty percent more as far as cost.
Into the mic.
The efficiency improvement. The cost will be anywhere from one to three percent. And that's what we're looking for now, is where it's stated, one to three percent. The twenty percent that I read had to do with the efficiency improvement in the structure itself.
And in regard to the whole concept of green communities?
Okay, in this statement, under the Stretch-
Into the mic, please, Larry.
Excuse me?
Into the mic.
The statement that I'm reading from is on a page that's listed to state the Stretch Energy Efficiency Building Code, what does it mean for Berlin residents? And under chapter, paragraph three, it says, "How much more would it cost?" For new homes, DOE, Department of Energy Resources, estimates that constructions' costs may rise approximately three to eight thousand, depending on size, and by one to three percent of total cost for commercial buildings. This was based on a modeling and cash flow analysis of April two thousand and ten. DOE's analysis also shows the value of energy savings to be greater than the mortgage payment increase. Additionally, initial costs will be reduced by state and utility incentives leading to further savings. This investment would make the house more comfortable and energy efficient with savings that would continue for the rest of the life of the house. Renovations slash additions would only need to meet the code for the systems that are added or replaced.
The Green Communities Act was passed by the state two years ago, and it has five criteria for a town to become a green community. The first, well, one of them is to adopt an expedited application and permitting process under which these energy facilities may be cited. And a little bit later on, we're going to look at adopting a solar bylaw. The first green community one is that you have to have some type of renewable energy either in your town, either generation, manufacturing. And we're gonna look at a solar bylaw which would enable you to have solar, they're called solar farms, where you could have lots and lots of solar panels to generate electricity. The second one is to adopt this expedited application and permitting process. The third one is we have to establish an energy-use baseline inventory for all municipal buildings, vehicles, street, and traffic lighting, and then put in place a comprehensive program designed to reduce the baseline by twenty percent within five years. The fourth is that we purchase only fuel-efficient vehicles for municipal use whenever such vehicles are commercially available. In our town, we have no vehicles that are not exempt from this. So, what we'll probably do is put in some bike racks or something. All of our vehicles are either fire trucks. We don't have any separate cars for inspectors, for the Board of Health. Other towns have things like that. The fifth requirement is that all new residential construction, over three thousand square feet, and all new commercial and industrial estate construction, to minimize, to the extent feasible, the life cycle cost of the facility by utilizing energy efficiency. And that is what we're talking about right now.
Anyone else want to speak on the motion?
Peter Hoffman. Peter Hoffman, Randall Road. From a practical standpoint, could you give us an idea if we were to replace windows in an existing home, or a furnace, or some other energy-consuming or energy-saving device, what it requires to replace all the windows in the house? Or if you had a furnace or two furnaces, I don't know why you would, would you have to replace both? From a practical standpoint, can you address what those renovations, repairs, replacements would mean? All or some would have to be replaced with the new code?
Yes, sir. If I'm doing a small remodeling project, like a kitchen or bathroom renovation, for instance, will I have to meet the Stretch Energy Code? If a small renovation involved replacing a couple of windows, which is what you're asking, an opening part of a wall cavity, then those new windows, the windows you're replacing, and the wall cavity would have to be brought up to the Stretch Code. Just as the plumbing in the kitchen or the bathroom being remodeled would have to comply with the plumbing code in the kitchen or the bathroom being remodeled. However, improving a kitchen or bathroom would not trigger required changes to the rest of the home, such as attic insulation or new heating system.
Anyone else?
Bill Coloccia, Pleasant Street. When would this take effect?
Did you ask when this will go into effect?
Yes.
If it got passed tonight at town meeting, it would start July first, two thousand eleven, well, from July first of this year through January of two thousand twelve, January first of two thousand twelve. It would be in effect, but it would not be mandatory. So, you could either build to the new code or you could build to the current code. And starting January first, two thousand twelve, it would be mandatory.
Anyone else? If not, we'll move toward the vote. The motion is to enact the Stretch Energy Code as a town bylaw as described in Article eleven with the following change. The new section shall be designated Article eighteen instead of Chapter eighteen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
The motion carries in the affirmative. Article twelve, which is to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw, Section four hundred ten, Flood Plain District, by deleting the current text in Sections four twelve and four thirteen and adding the following. And then you have, again, a lengthy section to be added to the zoning bylaw. Tim Wheeler of the Planning Board.
Tim Wheeler, two forty, Pleasant Street. I'm a member of the Planning Board. I move that the town vote to amend the Berlin zoning bylaw, Section four-ten, Flood Plain District, as printed in Article twelve of the annual town meeting warrant.
The motion is made and seconded to amend the Berlin zoning bylaw, Section four-ten, Flood Plain District, as printed in Article twelve of the annual town meeting warrant. Tim?
The Planning Board is required to give a report whenever there's a zoning article that's come before the town meeting. So, that's what we'll be presenting as we deal with zoning articles. The Town of Berlin Planning Board held a public hearing on Tuesday, April twelfth, two thousand eleven, at eight P.M. at the Berlin Town Offices. The purpose of the public hearing was to provide interested parties with an opportunity to comment on Article twelve on the annual town meeting warrant to be held May second, two thousand and eleven. At the Planning Board meeting held on Tuesday, April twenty-sixth, two thousand and eleven, the Planning Board voted five in favor, zero opposed to Article twelve. In January, the Selectmen received a letter from the Federal Emergency Management Agency advising them that the town should enact in a legally enforceable document, a number of new standards. Essentially, the flood insurance rate maps have been redrawn, and what you see in the text of the Article twelve is the specific pages of Flood Plain map that has to be adopted, along with some other notification requirements that the building inspector will be required to take care of now. So, basically, we've brought the Flood Plain section of the zoning bylaw into compliance with the federal regulations. And that's basically what you're being asked to do tonight. If you have any technical questions, I'd be delighted to have the building inspector answer them.
Anyone else want to speak on the motion? Hearing no one, the motion is "I move that the town vote to amend the Berlin zoning bylaw, Section four-ten, Flood Plain District, as printed in Article twelve of the annual town meeting warrant." All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
The motion carries by a two-thirds vote. Okay. Article thirteen, to see if the town will vote to close out a series of special articles. Tom Andrew?
Mister Moderator, I move to close out the following special articles and to transfer the total amount of one thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars and forty-one cents to the stabilization account. Article thirty-seven, fiscal year ten municipal building floor tiles in the amount of two hundred ninety-nine dollars. Article thirty-six, fiscal year ten municipal building stucco and drywall repairs in the amount of ninety dollars. Article forty-three, fiscal year ten emergency shelter cots and blankets in the amount of seventeen dollars and sixty-four cents. Article eighteen, fiscal year oh-nine school sound system in the amount of six hundred forty-nine dollars ninety-five cents. Article nineteen, fiscal year oh-nine school steamer repairs in the amount of one hundred three dollars seventy-nine cents. Article forty-six, fiscal year ten highway loader tires in the amount of two hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty cents. And Article thirty-five, fiscal year oh-three, Tohonto roof repairs in the amount of forty-nine dollars and eighty-three cents.
The motion is to close out the list of special articles, which is included in the article that you received with your warrant, and as just read- article that you received with your warrant, and as just read by Mr. Andrew, and to transfer the total amount of $1,425.41 to the stabilization account. Want to speak to it?
Yeah, these are all special articles for the particular purposes that are recited, and then their little drips and drabs that were left over once the proposed project was finished.
Finance Committee comment?
Recommend.
Finance Committee recommends. Does anyone else want to speak to the motion? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 14. To see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from the Anna Hunt Fund, and so on and so on, for the library. Asha Johnston of the Library Trustees.
Hi, Asha Johnston, Baker Road. I move to transfer the sum of $50 from the Anna Hunt Fund to the library account, and to appropriate from the Library Dog Fund the sum of $1,831.50 to the library account, and to further authorize the acceptance of any other monies from various sources to the library account.
Motion is made and seconded to transfer the sum of $50 from the Anna Hunt Fund to the library account, and to appropriate from the Library Dog Fund the sum of $1,831.50 to the library account, and to further authorize the acceptance of any other monies from various sources to the library account. Finance Committee comment?
Recommend.
Finance Committee recommends. Does anyone else want to speak to the motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 15. To see if the town will vote to accept a sum of money for perpetual care in the cemeteries, and a sum of money for the cemetery flower fund, or take any action relative thereto. Call on Sally Bergen of the Cemetery Commission.
I move that the sum of $2,400 be accepted for perpetual care in the cemeteries.
Motion made and seconded that the sum of $2,400 be accepted for perpetual care in the cemeteries. Finance Committee recommends. Does anyone else want to speak on the motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote. The motion is the sum of $2,400 to be accepted for perpetual care in the cemeteries. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 16. To see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, Section 71F, added by Statute 1982, Chapter 43, providing for the establishment of revolving fund for all monies received by the school committee for various business. Motion for under Article 16. Ruth Blandon of the School Committee.
Ruth Blandon, Lyman Road. Mr. Moderator, I move to accept the provision of Mass. General Law, Chapter 71, Section 71F, added by the Statute 1982, Chapter 43, providing for the establishment of a revolving fund for all monies received by the school committee, as tuition payments for non-resident students, and as state reimbursement for students who are foster care children, shall be deposited within the treasure of the town and held as separate accounts. The receipts held in such a separate account may be expended by said school committee without further appropriation for expenses incurred in providing education for such non-resident students, or for such students who are foster care children, notwithstanding the provision of Section 53 of Chapter 44.
The motion is to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, Section 71F, and the rest of the thing reads the same as your article. Do you want to speak to it, Ruth?
I'd like, Mr. Moderator, would you recognize John Roy?
What?
If you could recognize John Roy, our Director of Financial Services.
What we're looking to do with this revolving fund...
Would you get closer to the mic, John?
What we're looking to do with this revolving fund is, we're going to set up some programs at the school for special ed, in order to try and hold kids in district rather than sending them out of district, which is more expensive. And what we hope to do is open the program up to other communities to send their students here based on tuition, and then use the tuition as revenue stream to help support the cost of the program. And the revolving fund would allow us to earmark the monies, the tuitions coming in for the program.
Finance Committee's comment?
Recommend.
Finance Committee recommends. What's, how is this money handled now? In other words, what's the change that's taking place?
Currently, we have two students coming in, and the, any program cost is in the regular school budget, and any tuition received goes into the town's general fund. What this would do is set aside and specifically earmark the funds for the program, and then we're hoping to grow the program.
Does anyone else want to speak to the question? If not, I'll ask you to vote. The motion is to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, Section 71F, provided for the, added by Statute 1982, Chapter 43, providing for the establishment of revolving fund for all monies received by the school committee, as tuition payments for non-resident students, and as state reimbursement for students who are foster care children, shall be deposited with the treasure of the town and held as separate accounts. And the rest of it reads the same as your article. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
The motion carries in the affirmative. Article 17. To see if the town will raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds a sum of money for the costs associated with designing and constructing an elevator addition and replacement storage, the 1870 Town Hall. Evy Duick of the Town Hall Advisory Committee.
Evy Duick, Highland Street. I move to pass over Article 17, Town Hall Elevator.
Most, the motion is to pass over Article 17. Evy, you want to speak to it?
The Town Hall Advisory Committee has been working on plans to add an elevator to the 1870 Town Hall, and had high hopes that we could complete our planning by this evening's meeting. Unfortunately, the severe winter and some historic boundary questions hampered the development of an accurate site plan. Last week, in the nick of time, but not quite the nick enough to have our plans ready, we did receive our complete site plan. We will now move to the next step of our project, which will lay out the elevator addition and the driveway, parking, and walkways necessary in the area between the Town Hall and the Blurred House. We are very pleased that the town has embraced this building once again as a central part of our community, and we are committed to making it accessible to all. As you can see on page 38 of the annual report, the usage of the building has grown over the past three years. Last year, we held almost 500 events, and generated income from rental fees and donations of over $13,000. Thank you for your continued support of this project. We feel keenly the need for moving ahead from so many of you who have rented the hall for special events, and attended the concerts and theater productions. We welcome all of your feedback as we take the next year to make a good thoughtful plan for accessibility that will serve the town for years to come. Thank you.
So the motion is made and seconded to pass over the article. Is there anything else to be said on the motion to pass over? If not, I'll ask you to, sorry, yes, Walter?
Some thoughts to keep in mind. My name's Walter Bigfoot, live at 212 South Street. And just some thoughts I want you to keep in mind through the year. So when you vote next year, you'll know what you're voting on, and think about this. I've been against this for a couple of reasons. Number one, I just think it's way more than we need. We can make that Town Hall accessible for a fraction of what I heard upwards of $300,000 to put an elevator in there. I've talked to an architect who lives in town, well-respected, and the answer was, we thought we could put one in there for $80,000, take care of getting people adequately to the second floor for $80,000 or even less. Another thing that really sort of concerns me a little bit, five or six years ago, you couldn't have raised $30,000 to save that Town Hall, and I think most of you in here know it. It was sitting around for five years, and there was a committee working on it, and got absolutely no place. And a bunch of us volunteers got in there, and it was a struggle to be able to volunteer for the town, as a matter of fact. And we went through it, from the crawl space underneath, putting in all new, replacing the rusty leak-in pipes, right to shoveling out two pickup loads of pigeon carcasses and manure from the top, painting, sills, getting rid of termites, everything. Virtually volunteer. A volunteer in town excavated the back of that, volunteer took out the old dilapidated restrooms, got rid of them, another volunteer dug it, a volunteer put in the concrete, a volunteer worked on the outside. When I look at this, if I couldn't get volunteers to do the driveway, do the parking, I'd hang it up. The volunteer spirit in this town is bubbling. But it not only is not being tapped into, frankly, it's stifled, and it's obstructed. So having been involved in that, and literally spending two years of my spare time getting that Town Hall and saving it, and frankly, I didn't do it for any elected official, I did it for you, for your children, and those of us who did it, we did it for the, it was a memorial to the veterans of the Civil War. And Berlin had more veterans of the Civil War than any other town around. We got people in Vietnam, the world wars, and we felt that we wanted to get that Town Hall up and going again. We volunteered to do it, and that's why it's the way it is today. And this cultural change that we're experiencing here, suddenly, everything is money, raising money. That's because the volunteers have kind of walked away, throwing their hands up in the air. You know, a friend of mine emailed...
Walter, it's a motion to pass over. I appreciate your point, but it's a motion to pass over.
Okay. So it's passed over, but we're going to, it's coming up next year, and I just want you to keep that in mind, these aspects, when we vote on it next year.
Anything else to be said on the motion to pass over? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 18. No.
Yes.
Yes. Article 18. To see if the town will vote to appropriate the apportionment of Chapter 90 transportation bond issue monies in the amount of $195,156, or take any action relative thereto.
I move to appropriate the apportionment of Chapter 90 transportation bond issue monies in the amount of $195,156.
Motion made and seconded to approve, appropriate the apportionment of Chapter 90 transportation bond issue monies in the amount of $195,156. Judy?
This is the, Chapter 90 funds are the transportation funds from the state.
Finance Committee's comment?
Recommend.
Finance Committee recommends. Anyone else want to speak on the motion? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds the sum of $70,000 for the purchase of hot top, or take any action relative thereto.
I move to transfer the sum of $70,000 from free cash for the purchase of hot top, said sum to be expended by the Board of Selectmen.
Motion to transfer the sum of $70,000 from free cash for the purchase of hot top, said sum to be expended by the Board of Selectmen. You want to speak to it, Val?
Well, Danny's not here, but it's something we do every year, and I don't know exactly what roads will be picked this year to be, I'm assuming summer will be the center of For the bicentaur.
Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Finance Committee recommends. Does anyone else want to speak on the motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 20. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds the sum of $15,000 for preliminary plans for highway garage, or take any action relative thereto. Judy Bowman.
I move to transfer the sum of $15,000 from free cash for preliminary plans for the highway garage, said sum to be expended by the Board of Selectmen.
Motion made and seconded to transfer the sum of $15,000 from free cash for this purpose. Judy, you want to speak to it?
This would be to develop preliminary plans, to create a new town barn, so that we could consolidate all of the highway equipment into one building.
Finance Committee recommends. Anyone else want to speak about the motion?
Once again, just in this, Walter Bigfoot, 212 South Street, just in the spirit of totally understanding the issue here, the Highway Superintendent has informed me if the barn on South Street didn't cave in with a snow load, this article wouldn't be here, and we wouldn't be looking for a new town barn, okay? This was according to the Superintendent of Highways. Is that true? If the barn didn't cave in, we would still be having this. Okay?
Anyone else want to speak about it?
My foot went to sleep. This money would be expended by whom?
By the Board of Selectmen. Anyone else to speak on the motion? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. The motion is to transfer the sum of $15,000 from free cash for preliminary plans for highway garage, said sum to be expended by the Board of Selectmen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries in the affirmative. Article 21. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds the sum of $75,000 for the purchase of a roadside boom mower for loaders, to replace the 1999 Baumford boom mower, or take any action relative thereto. Val?
Tongue twister. I move to transfer the sum of $75,000 from free cash for the purchase of a roadside boom mower for loaders, to replace the 1999 Baumford boom mower, and some to be expended by the Board of Selectmen.
The motion is to transfer the sum of $75,000 from free cash for this purpose. Finance Committee has a positive recommendation. Anything further? Anything further? Anyone else want to speak on the motion?
Well, the 1999 boom mower broke, so we want, he needs to be replaced so we can do the mowing on the sides of the road.
Joni Bergen, 11 Pleasant Street. Val, is this the thing that gets used to chew like some kind of mutant goat against the trees that are along the sides of the roads? I hate that thing! I'm sure it's meant to mow grass and brush, but chewing the trees is just, I can't understand Jeannie Savelle, 80 Summer Road. Joni, I agree with you. I call it a deranged beaver.
A little closer to the-
Awful. Will this mower cut any better than the last one?
I sense a developing consensus that people want it not to cut as well. I would point out that the current one is broken. The Selectmen will convey to the Highway Superintendent, you know, some concern with the overly aggressive use of it.
The others that wish to speak.
Bob Blair, Summer Road. In the past, there used to be a farmer who came by with a scythe cutter and did that off a tractor. I don't know if this is a replacement for it, but I'm wondering if the Baumford boomer can be, if that's more expensive for the town to buy one than to contract for someone to do the same services, perhaps someone with a more accurate eye for foliage to be clipped. Just a question.
Anyone prepared to respond? Want to speak, Peter?
Peter Hoffman again. I guess I wonder, I'm no boom or mower expert, but how is it possible that $75,000 is required to replace it and it can't be repaired for a fraction of that? Does anybody know the answer? I mean, there's some contractors here that work with this kind of equipment all the time. There must be somebody in the room that can justify an expense like this. It's not a minor expense. Does anyone know?
The Finance Committee of Selectmen, comment a little bit on that.
I just mow my own lawn, but the thing is, 12 years old. I would expect that this other one would have a life span of, you know, 10 to 15 years as well. I think amortized over that period of time, it's not unreasonable. And when you view, you know, maybe $7,000 a year as a contract to mow the sides of the roads, and also some of the harder to reach areas in various public plots of land, it doesn't seem to me to be an unreasonable amount.
Doesn't it beg the question of what the repair cost is? Shouldn't we know that before committing to a $75,000 bill? Thank you.
Don't give answers to that all hand, please.
Don't have details and exact costs, but what we're informed on this is this, the Baumford mower is a British model that has become difficult to obtain parts to, to even repair. So that's the reason for getting rid of this and replacing it, because if it could be repaired, he would, but he's talked about, mentioned of actually having to try and make his own parts for this, so.
Anyone else? The motion is to transfer the sum of $75,000 from free cash for the purchase of a roadside boom mower for loaders to replace the 1999 Baumford boom mower, said sum to be expended by the Selectmen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. I guess we'll have a show of hands on that, just so we know how it came out. I already think I know, but for everybody else's benefit, let's make sure we agree. I'm going to ask some people to help with the count. Roger Stanley, would you help me on this side? Tom, would you help me in the center? Jill Molika, would you come up and do this side first, please? All those in favor of the motion, please raise a hand. Eighteen in the center. Twenty-five over here on this side.
Thirty-five.
Twenty-five over here.
Fifteen.
Eight.
Seventy-eight in favor, twenty-eight opposed. Article twenty-two, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds the sum of $6,000 for the replacement or repair of defibrillators. Article twenty-two, is there a motion on that? Dennis Furibay of the Rescue Squad.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer the sum of $6,000 from free cash for the replacement or repair of defibrillators for the Police Department Rescue Squad, said sums to be expended by the Board of Selectmen.
Motion made and seconded to transfer the sum of $6,000 from free cash for the replacement or repairs of defibrillators for the Police Department Rescue Squad, said sum to be expended by the Board of Selectmen. Dennis?
A while back, the Selectmen asked me to put together a program, as did the Finance Committee, for the cost and the management of defibrillators. We, right now, are running two different models in four different departments, and would like to have one model, one training device, one standard. On the Rescue Squad and in the police, they're reaching the end of their life, somewhere in the seven-year to eight-year range. And we also have come up with more places in town that, town buildings that we feel we should have them, like the library, possibly the Old Town Hall. We do have one out here in the school. And would like to have one quality control organization. Right now, everyone's responsible for making sure they work and they're being tested. Once these standards are done and the defibrillators are purchased, we hope to take the few that are workable and move them out to the Fire Department and possibly other locations in town until the cycle comes around that we can replace those to be the same model. We also would like to set a standard, and once that standard is set, move it out to the private sector. We have some big projects, surprisingly, supposedly, no defibrillators over at the mall. Would like to make sure that the new, I'm sure they'll have them at the new building at Northbrook Village down at River Bridge. Would like to have them purchase. We can't require it by law or mandate it, but would like to have them have the same models, so that when we show up, the Fire Department shows up, the police shows up, we're all trained on the same devices, we can switch the parts, and hopefully, the new devices will also allow us to switch over to paramedic, which is a paramedic level. So that's what the money will buy us. We will have to determine as a group, it will be the chiefs to determine, what type of defibrillator we want. You know, there's one called a professional, one called a public. You get into places like the school here, the teachers and them have been trained how to use the professional model, but we're not so sure what would happen if the folks at night playing basketball, how, we have to figure that stuff out. These things are available through grants, and we will try to get grants, and that's it.
Finance Committee is recommending this? Anything else to be said on the motion? Hearing nothing, I'll ask you to vote. It's for $6,000 from free cash for defibrillators. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries in the affirmative. Article twenty-three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds, the sum of $15,000 for the expansion of Keys Road to the South Common, said work to be performed by the Highway Department or take any action relative thereto. Tom Andrews.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article twenty-three.
Motion made and seconded to pass over. Do you want to comment on that, Tom?
Yeah, back in the mid-eighties, after the building of the salt shed on the South Common at the discretion of the Selectmen, a number of citizen proponents, including myself, put forth a bylaw that required the town meeting approve roads and buildings on town land and impose some formalities and additional notice requirements, which were not conformed with here, so that we really have no choice but to pass this over in accordance with the bylaw.
Is there anything to be said about the motion to pass over? Hearing nothing, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Unanimous vote to pass over. Article twenty-four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds the sum of $15,000 to Section 53I of Chapter forty-four of the General Laws. Is that 53I, 53L or 531? 53I. To fund work to be performed by the Bicentennial Committee in preparation for the Town of Berlin's 200th Birthday Celebration in the year 2012 or take any action relative thereto. Mr. Furibay.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer the sum of $15,000 from free cash pursuant to Section 530I of Chapter forty-four of the General Laws to fund work to be performed by the Bicentennial Committee in preparation for the Town of Berlin's 200th Birthday Celebration in the year 2012, said sum to be expended by the Board of Selectmen. We've been saving over the last two or three years, building up some funds. This year, if you approve the 15, we'll have about $30,000 to celebrate. Next year is the year, and we have a whole lot of things planned. Now, we're going into this a little on the quiet side, because so many things we come up with have already been done by local organizations. So with the exception of the parade, fireworks, and hopefully, a few bonfires, a lot of what we'll be doing will be supplementing what is already done in Berlin, at Christmas in Berlin, Old Home Day, et cetera. We would like to see if we could get some volunteers for the parade. The parade is the, kind of the big event of the year. And it's, hopefully, it'll be an hour and a half long. They tell me that 50 years ago, there were 10,000 people that came to town to see it. So if that's true. Tom Andrews is going to be writing a play, which we're kind of excited about. We hope to, I think the Fire Must is in town that year, so we hope to see that kind of beefed up. And we hope to raise as much money as we can to pay back the 30,000. It has been done in other towns, and it's our goal. It's not a guarantee, but it's a goal. Thank you.
Finance Committee has a positive recommendation. Is there anything else to be said on this motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote. This is for $15,000 from free cash. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Folks, this committee's been working for a couple of years, and they keep saying to people, "We need volunteers." I'm really going to ask that some people be enthusiastic and see Dennis, see Eloise, see Marcia, and say, "We're enthusiastic. We'd like to help." They could really use some. They're doing a good job, but they need some people to support it. Article twenty-five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, end or borrow or transfer from available funds the sum of $12,000 for the replacement of radio pagers or take any action relative thereto.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. McCarron.
I move to transfer the sum of $12,000 from free cash, for the replacement of radio pagers for the Fire Department, said sum to be expended by the Board of Selectmen.
Motion made and seconded to transfer the sum of $12,000 from free cash for the replacement of radio pagers for the Fire Department, said sum to be expended by the Board of Selectmen. Chief McCarron.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to ask that Fire Engineer Rick Plummer be recognized.
Okay.
Rick Plummer, Board of Fire Engineers. What we're talking about here is the radio pagers that all the firefighters carry 24 hours a day. It alerts them to whatever the incident is, its location, and so forth. The reason for replacing the fleet at this time is twofold. One, the last bunch we got on a grant seven years ago, they're good for about seven years when you carry them on your belt 24 hours a day, if you're sleeping with your belt on. And number two, in 2004 and '05, we actually changed the radio system. These pagers are still on what we call the low-band system. Everything else is on our UHF system. So now, this is the final piece, if you will. We intentionally delayed because we had gotten the previous ones on a grant, and we said, "Well, we'll run their life out." Well, here we are. It's run life out. So it's basically the lifeline that gets everybody alerted to your incident.
We have a positive recommendation from the Finance Committee.
Yes.
Is there anything else to be said on the motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote. That's $12,000 from free cash for radio pagers for the Fire Department. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries in the affirmative. This is Article twenty-six. This is about $46,000 for breathing apparatus and air cylinders. This is about $46,000 for breathing apparatus and air cylinders.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer the sum of $46,000 from free cash for the replacement of breathing apparatus and air cylinders for the fire department, said sum to be expended by the Board of Selectmen. Again, through grant funds, we were able to obtain these air packs originally at no cost to the town. The cylinders that go in the air packs have an absolute life of 18 years, 15 to 18 years, depending upon the materials that they're manufactured with. The early ones were manufactured with fiberglass wrapping. The later ones have a Kevlar wrapping, which gives them the 18-year lifespan. Two of these have already reached their drop-dead date, and the rest of them are about to reach that drop-dead date also, and they can no longer be used by the fire service.
Finance Committee?
Recommends.
Recommends. Is there anything else to be said on this motion? Did I see it here? No. Okay.
Chris Flynn, South Street. Just wondered if there is any possibility of getting any more grants for these things.
There is a possibility on a year-to-year basis to apply for a grant. There's only so many times you're going to be able to go back to the federal government and cry that you don't have the money to do it yourself. Part of the grant process is to show that you have an implementation plan to maintain the products that they're giving you grant monies for. We could, I can't rule out that we couldn't go for a grant for them. In the meantime, we would lose the, all these packs from service pending the grants. The grant process has just opened up right now to submit a grant. The grants wouldn't be awarded if we did get one until about October to December of this coming year, so we'd be without those packs for that length of time.
Others that wish to speak? If not, I'll ask you to vote. The motion is to transfer the sum of $46,000 from free cash for the replacement of breathing apparatus and air cylinders for the fire department, said sum to be expended by the Board of Selectmen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 27, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or borrow or transfer from available funds, a sum of $14,000 for the replacement of large diameter hose or take any action relative thereto. Bruce?
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer the sum of $14,000 from free cash for the replacement of large diameter hose for the fire department, said sum to be expended by the Board of Selectmen.
Motion is for $14,000 from free cash. Bruce?
This is part of our supply line, that large five-inch hose that we use to lay from a water source to the source of the fire, or if you have a long driveway, just manage to get the water up that long driveway from the bag that we would pump from down at the street level. The hose has pretty much an absolute lifespan. Also, this hose does not have, the newer generation hose has a lock on the coupling, so that when it's being laid out, it doesn't come uncoupled. This older hose, what'll happen is, as it's coming out of the apparatus, it'll become, it'll uncouple itself just by the twisting motion of it coming out, and you end up finding out, you're not getting water to the scene because it's, the hose isn't coupled. So, the newer hose has a locking coupling to keep it in place. The hose also, because it's an extruded rubber product with some nylon reinforcement in the extrusion, has a brittleness that develops over time, and we're starting to find failure rate of it. So, this is part of a planned process to, over time, replace the hose as it ages.
Finance Committee recommends this?
Yes.
Does anyone else want to speak on the motion? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. The motion is to transfer the sum of $14,000 from free cash for the replacement of large diameter hose for the fire department, said sum to be expended by the Board of Selectmen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Next article, $3,300 for the purpose of traffic preemption devices.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article 28.
This was to start an implementation process of putting the devices on the emergency apparatus so that we can effect changing any lights that we encounter, to put it green in our direction. I don't care that the trucks would potentially, or that the emergency apparatus would get there faster, that's not my concern. My concern is safety and liability. Right now, as you approach an intersection, if you can imagine yourself at that intersection, you've got an emergency apparatus coming behind you, you're wondering what you should do with a red light ahead of you. The options for you right now are to either to enter into a red light at intersection, which you can't do, stay where you are, and the emergency apparatus then goes on the wrong side of the road, which is against the law. So, the long-term answer is to implement a, this type of a device. Right now, as new lights introduced, such as the one up at 495, and any future ones that come into town, I will submit a letter to the state insisting that they put the device on the light set itself. That's the large expense. I did that for the 495 lights, that device is up there. This money, approximately $1,100 per apparatus or piece of emergency equipment, is for us to effect that light change on our end. I understand, sort of like the defibrillators, that what we should do is come up with a plan for all the emergency vehicles, and it would be my intent, if we pass over this, which I would support, that we come back next year with a plan to implement it for all the apparatus over time.
Anything else to be said on the motion to pass over? Hearing nothing, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor of passing over the article say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 29, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, end or borrow or transfer from available funds, a sum of money for the purchase of a fire engine and related equipment to replace the current engine one or take any action relative thereto. Bruce?
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer the sum of $200,000 from free cash and to appropriate the sum of $250,000 from the stabilization fund for the purchase of a fire engine and related equipment to replace the current engine one, a 1986 fire engine, said sum to be expended by the Board of Selectmen.
Motion is made and seconded to transfer the sum of $200,000 from free cash and to appropriate the sum of $250,000 from the stabilization fund for the purchase of a fire engine and related equipment to replace the current engine one, a 1986 fire engine, said sum to be expended by the Board of Selectmen. Chief McCarron.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to recognize Rick Plummer, Board of Fire Engineers.
Rick Plummer, Board of Fire Engineers. Pardon me if I work from my notes, I don't like to do that, but I think this is important enough to not miss anything. Let's talk about why you should replace this fire truck. When looking at a piece of fire apparatus, you need to consider the environment in which it's going to operate. Our town has a few changes going on, you might have noticed. Larger homes, longer driveways, shared driveways, all challenges for apparatus, more businesses to protect. Our resources are not much different in water supply. We still don't have hydrants. I looked for one on the way down here, and nope, no hydrants. Manpower during the daytime is less available than it used to be. Cold wells isn't there to dump a whole team out on the street in the middle of the day anymore, so we need to design apparatus that can work with fewer people manning it. We need to look at standards. You say, "Oh, well, NFPA 1901, Standard for Automotive Fire Apparatus." See, why do we care about a standard? You care about it for two reasons. They're aimed at providing a safe and efficient operation for firefighters and for the protection they offer to you. Look at your insurance rates. They play into the ISO fire rating, but closer at hand, you buy a new home or you go to a new insurance company, they call a chief. They say, "Well, we need to know about your fire protection for this property." Reasonable request. They want to know about what apparatus we have, what hose we have, what water do we carry on the apparatus, where else do we get our water, what's our training, what's our operational methods? That's what your insurance company asks the chief. We want to give them all the right answers, that we have our act under control, that we have a plan to protect the property that they're protecting in a sense. We average about 300 incidents a year, give or take, over the last handful of years, but we're still a rural community. We can't forget that. If we look at our fleet of apparatus, we've had six pieces in the fleet for the last 30-plus years. Over the last handful of years, with the capital planning folks, we have a plan in place for 22-year life. Bigger cities are 20. We're rural, we're Berlin. We can do 22 years. Each replacement is in the context of the needs and the current technology. For example, the chief just mentioned large diameter hose. That's a new technology in the fire service a decade or more ago. Use of foam. We don't have a lot of water. We need foam on board to make sure we make use of it. Our vacuum tanker, 2,600 gallons, that we can pump, pop a hose into the water hole and fill it up by itself with one person, if he's stronger than I am, anyway. That, by the way, was purchased with a grant and cost the town nothing, so we don't have to worry about that. Why six vehicles? Well, some are specialized. The brush truck is designed to get out brush fires, go off the road if necessary. The water tanker is designed to move water, doesn't do any of the other jobs. A couple of attack pieces and a couple of rural water supply pieces make up the fleet. If we had hydrants, we could do it with two. With us, it takes us five, plus mutual aid, just to begin a continuous operation with water supply we can depend on for our safety and to save your lives and property. Time is the issue. Fire doubles every 30 seconds in a house environment. Could take us 15 to 20 minutes to get mutual aid here. We don't need mutual aid from Hudson or Clinton for water supply. We need tankers from Stowe, from Bolton, from Boylston, from Boxborough and Harvard, so it takes time to amass those resources. If any of you that looked at the poster on the way in, taking on a structured fire requires additional resources. A rapid intervention team to protect our firefighters is generally an engine from those communities that are close, Hudson, Clinton, tankers, as I mentioned, possibly other special resources. So, we have a plan that utilizes our vehicles as the core of the process, mutual aid to augment and to get the job done. Why should we do it now? Well, there's a number of reasons. This is the right time in the capital plan. We fit into a slot, if you will. It'll be several more years, 10 or more before, we need more apparatus replaced. We got the brush truck a few years ago. This is the slot. We will be able to barely avoid a cost increase associated with diesel emission controls. That'll be $60,000 more if we do it a year or more from now. It's already late for this piece of apparatus. It has serious repair needs. We're looking at spending $30,000 to $50,000 just to get it back in operation, never minding the fact that it can't be brought up to date in a complete sense. So, we've stretched the life to 26 years, beyond the 22 we would normally do, so we basically need to get on with it. Our committee, Jim Kincaid and the folks in the fire department, many of whom are here tonight, looked at alternatives. We could continue to repair. We could continue to dump money into a pit. There are no warranties. We could put $50,000 or $60,000 into it, and day after tomorrow, get another hit. It's 26 years old. It's an antique. It doesn't belong in active fire service. We can't refurbish it. Refurbish means bring it up to current standards. A piece of fire apparatus that's more than 15 years old can't be refurbished to current standards. We looked at combining it with a tanker. Well, maybe we can do this with fewer pieces of fire apparatus. We could design that piece. It would be enormous, it would be heavy, it wouldn't be able to negotiate the places we need to go, and it would be less flexible. If we tied up the pump, now you've tied up your tank. If it's separate pieces, we have the flexibility. So, what we're proposing is design a piece that will meet Berlin's needs to fit the town. No frills, no chrome bumpers, delete a couple of passenger seats, but carry 1,250 gallons water and carry foam. A 1,500-gallon fire pump, the required hoses for both supply lines and attack, to fit Berlin's needs, not some other town. By the way, we looked at some in other New Hampshire towns, or in towns in New Hampshire, typical average pumpers, 600,000. We're only proposing 450,000. So, the team has done a good job at paring it down, fitting it to the needs. This is clearly an overview. Remember, the team's members are here if we need to answer other questions, but the bottom line is, this is the next step in our evolutionary plan to provide you with protection, so basically, we're asking for your support so that we can help protect you. Thank you.
Finance Committee?
Recommends.
Anything else to say? Finance Committee recommends this motion. Are there others that wish to speak? Skip Duggan?
Good evening. Skip Duggan, 59 Ball Hill Road. First of all, what I'm going to say is no reflection on the quality of the fire department that we have and the folks that volunteer. I applaud them for the work that they do. Tonight, I believe we're a little bit misled. We are not making a decision about a fire engine. We're making a decision about spending $450,000, not $200,000 you just talked about. It's $450,000. That's $373 per household in town. We're making a decision to spend $450,000, which will make it incumbent upon the fire department to come back and ask for full-time fire people to be associated with that fire truck in the future. That's number one. And number two, if we spend this type of money, we are deciding that we are going to have a fire service business as usual. No analysis has been done relative to regionalization or sharing of services. When I lived in Minnesota, fire is done on a district basis. When I lived in Tennessee, they had both county and district and regional fire departments, not town by town by town. In all three of those instances, the quality of service improved radically because they were able to get there quicker, because they had regionalized, high-quality centers with full-time employees, and the costs were cut substantially. I think we're way premature to spend $450,000 on a fire engine, which will mean that for the next 20 years, we have business-as-usual fire services until the selectmen in our town do a study about regionalization and shared services. I live on Ball Hill. I don't care how good this fire department is, we're, they're volunteer. If you know about the fire department, the staff full-time, and the rotary at Hudson, I would think that that fire department in Hudson could get to my house faster than the volunteer fire department, could get to the station in Berlin, and then get the truck to my house. And I believe with the water services we have now, and even would have with that new truck, I think my house is going to burn down anyway, if, like Mr. Plummer said, every 30 seconds, the house, the fire doubles. I believe that time is of the essence. They aren't going to get there anyway. If the engine is bought, I do believe it will be a continuation of the business as usual, and a likely, a likelihood that we're going to end up with a full-time fire department. I know that the Finance Committee will say that they approve this. I think that the truck that we have can be repaired, and I, for one, I would say I'd be willing to risk the repairs on the engine. The question I have for Mr. Plummer is, if we had 300 incidents last year, how many times was the truck that's going to be replaced called out on those incidents? It's not a big town, it's not a lot of mileage, the rubbers in the gasket and the hoses on the truck could be repaired. So, I, for one, encourage you not to vote on buying a new fire engine until the town is done. has done the proper study. In business, I would never see anyone spend $450,000 without doing a rational analysis of alternatives.
Is there, answer the question that was asked about incidents? Bruce?
Sure. It's twofold. First of all, on regionalization, which that issue came up last year.
Into the mic a little bit.
I'm sorry. The issue of regionalization, which came up last year, I will respond the same way. I am 100% behind the concept of looking at issues of regionalization. It starts obviously with the book. Oh, there goes my vote. Regionalization is something that I would advise the town take a look at. It's not something that's going to occur rapidly. Keep in mind that the other communities proximal adjacent to Berlin already have their fire services, with the exception of Bolton, which has one staffed person paid. They already have a department that's staffed 24/7. I can't speak to whether or not they're interested in regionalizing what's in it for them, but it's something that we should look at. The police chief and I have both encouraged that the town look at regionalization of dispatch to look at, see if we can save monies there. As far as the full-time issue, it's not the piece of apparatus that's going to drive that. It's the availability of personnel. It's no secret that, as Rick mentioned, Cole Wells isn't around anymore. There are a lot of people that used to work in Berlin that don't work in Berlin anymore. Even people who are independently, I was saying independent, they're self-employed, finding that they're having to travel a lot further afield in order to accomplish their jobs, to get their jobs. Instead of going to Berlin or a neighboring town to do construction or excavation or plumbing, they're having to go much further afield. So their ability to be available is a lot less. The rescue squad's facing the same thing in terms of response. It's something that the town is going to have to look at. Voting for or against this piece of apparatus will not drive the question of staffing, in my opinion. And Rick, you want to speak to the other part?
Yes, you asked about the percentage of calls that this piece of apparatus goes to. You need to understand the full life cycle of an apparatus. The one we're replacing virtually ran on every call out of the station 10, 12 years ago. As it's gotten older and as we've gotten newer pieces, we've changed its role. The same thing would happen with a new piece of apparatus. It would start in a different role than just replacing this one. We wouldn't propose a piece of apparatus to just replace this one. From a numbers perspective, this particular piece of apparatus ran on about 15% of the calls last year. You say, "Why would we want to do that?" Because in the new role, or if you crank back the clock 10 to 15 years, running virtually every run, the new piece of apparatus round numbers 50 to 60%, and we'll judge that based on assignments and so forth, change the computer run sheets and so forth. So it will start life differently than replacing this piece of apparatus. I hope that gives you a little bit of insight into more than just numbers, but the total philosophy of what happens when you buy a new piece and work it through the system. Some of the ones we run every day now will get to be old at some point in their life. They're halfway through now.
Are there others that wish to speak?
Hi, I'm Buzz Harris. I live at 21 Village Lane. About, I don't know, an hour ago, I watched the folks in this room, myself included, vote through a $10 million budget, give or take, they can correct me if I'm wrong, with no questions. And now the fire department, I don't know them well, but I trust them, is saying, "We have a truck that's ancient and it's going to cost us tens of thousands of dollars if we want to try to get it fixed, probably on an ongoing basis every year." And they need a new one. I'm a little puzzled why we're willing to ask no questions at all about a $10 million budget and have such a concern, some folks anyway, about this one. I support, I, no, like I said, I have no, I don't know them. I have nothing to do with the finance committee. I trust the finance committee's recommendation. I think we should approve it. It seems pretty straightforward to me. Thank you.
I oppose this, Walter Bigfoot, 212 Street. Those of you who were last year know I opposed it last year, and I oppose it again this year. I spent quite a bit of time on this because it is an interesting issue. I think one thing Rick alluded to a minute ago really gets at the basis of it, and that is the philosophy of the department. But we'll get to that as time goes on. I have spent quite a bit of time on it. My sources of information for what I'm going to tell you are one- to-two-hour visits into Boylston Fire Chief, to Bolton Fire Chief, Lancaster Fire Chief, and people on the Clinton Fire Department, and a phone interview over the, with people in the Carlisle Fire Department, looking at annual reports. And I had a very good conversation with the fire chief and Rick Plummer. Both of them just very well-informed and they were very cooperative, and I appreciated that. We had a great discussion. But also other members of the Berlin Fire Department and Rescue Squad. So I didn't pick this stuff up in a rumor mill and go on with that. But basically, the bottom line of what I found out, and I'll get into details on it, is that Berlin Fire Department is better equipped or has more firefighting power and capacity than Boylston, than the town of Clinton, and Bolton, Lancaster, Carlisle, all the towns that I have called. Now, that isn't all apples and apples. Clinton has water, and that's important, and Lancaster does too. But Boylston doesn't, Bolton doesn't, Carlisle doesn't. The other three towns, Carlisle, Bolton, and Boylston, have volunteer departments. But I looked at them and I tried to put together a little, a little chart to look at some of these things. Oh, well, yeah, the other thing I want to make this point is that what the fire department would like to do is talk about this truck and look through a stovepipe at it and just deal with the truck. And believe me, it's real hard to talk about and question the statistics they can have on that truck. But you've got to open it up and you've got to look at the whole department and the philosophy of the department and where we're going. I have to, but let's deal, let's just deal with that truck first of all, on its face. I have to wonder who assessed the repair, who assessed it for the repairs and the cost of it? And I asked the question to the chief, "Why didn't they take it to the highway department?" The highway department has got men on that department that take apart trucks, weld vehicles, repair our plows. They're certified for brake work and all kinds of heavy equipment. One reason is because they don't talk. But we should have had that done. There are other towns do all their repair work. So I can't believe that it's going to cost $30,000 to $50,000. My guess is if we let the guys look at it, look at the frame, there's some rotten wood on it apparently, I would bet that it could get done and repaired a lot cheaper. The specs extravagant. I don't know trucks, and I can't do that. I've talked to, every chief I talked to and said, "We're looking for a $450,000 pumper." They were polite about it. Didn't gulp or anything, but kind of rolled their eyes back and thought that was a pretty steep price. And what I understand, they can pick one up for $50,000 or $60,000 less off the shelf, so to speak. And again, another thing, and again, this is all important to this truck and how this decision is made. Couple of years ago, we bought a brush truck. I think it was around $130,000 because our old truck didn't work. And we, and the reason it didn't, we listened to these people talk about it and convinced us that that truck was no good. So we bought another truck. Well, that truck was purchased by a town in New Hampshire for $500. The day that that truck arrived, two days after that truck arrived in, I think it was Andover, I talked to the chief up there, gave him a call, his name was Chuck Ellis. And he said he had that truck on site and it performed perfectly. When I talked to him the other day, the company had just completed totally fitting out that truck with hoses and all the apparatus you need on it. And without any prompting to me, he said, "We just love that truck." That was a brush truck. Wasn't good enough for us, but this other town took it second-hand and they love it and they're using it. Makes me wonder, you know, just how really they're looking at alternatives, are really looking at whether this truck needs to be replaced. Let me give you some statistics. I told you before, not all these towns are apples and apples. But Berlin and Bolton are pretty much the same. I've always thought, I think everybody in Berlin always thought of Bolton as its sister community, okay? And also Carlisle. Carlisle, I'll tell you about in a minute. Berlin, let's look at comparison. Berlin has 2,800 people. Bolton has 4,800, 170% of what we have. Nilla Town has town water. We have about 47 road miles. Bolton has 75 road miles, 160% of what we have. Now, this is interesting. The trucks, we have six trucks. Berlin has five trucks. Bolton, I mean, has five trucks. We have on wheels about 7,100 gallons of water that we can put into a fire. Bolton has 57, and figures it is accurate, 80% of what Berlin has. Calls per year, this is, I find intriguing. Given those statistics I just told you, Berlin, I think this, the 2009 reports that I'm really repairing, comparing, I looked at 2010 also, but we had in 2009, 224 calls. Bolton had 142. Looking from 2001 to 2010, Berlin has anywheres from 1/3 to over 100% of the calls of Bolton. Why? What is this about? We had 26 categories of calls under 224 calls. Bolton has 14 categories, categories at 142 calls, 63% of what Berlin has, although it has 171% of the population, 170% of the road miles. So one has, this, this red flags, you have to look at this stuff. This is some of the criteria you have to look at. So why does Berlin have all these calls? And I think it definitely partially due to this going to the mall, which is what I talked about last year, and there's no need of that. Let me talk about those mall calls. I'll go through it one more time. I, I told, I talked with the fire chief of Card and also Rick, and they, their interpretation of the law, "Yeah, we have to go to the mall." Well, my interpretation from it, and I get my information, by the way, from two former selectmen who are deeply involved in getting the mall here. One of them called the mall developers for Solomon Pond Mall. One guy's named Cronin, I forgot what the other guy's name is. And also talking with Selectman Andrew in the past. And they all have led me to believe, and the mall people themselves feel, and oh, by the way, I talked to the mayor of the city of Marlboro and the fire chief of the city of Marlboro, and I put all this in writing. And they all agreed that we do not have to go to the mall. Without an argument on it. If there's an argument on it, let me just ask you this, or ask yourselves this. Chief of Card just got up and talked about regionalization and how much he's for it. Here's one opportunity laying on the table, yet they fight and reach and stretch and create to keep that mall call. It isn't necessary, and we shouldn't be doing it. Other reasons, I don't know. And then you look at the statistics, frankly, they're not very informative. You go back to 2001, they had chimney fires then, and then they had some dwelling fires. You look at the thing now, we have 14 building fires. Were they chicken coops, dog, what were they? Bolton has an average of one and a half to two dwelling fires a year. They separate the chimney fires. Are we calling chimney fires building fires? So none of this information, because you can't get out of the statistics in the town report, what percentage of our calls go to the mall. So there's a lot of other information here, and if I have to get up again, I don't particularly want to. I think I've just laid enough on the table so that most people can ask the question, "What are we doing?" Based on any set of criteria that I've had, road miles, pumping power, water on wheels, et cetera, et cetera, we don't even need that truck. Other towns have five trucks. Again, Clinton has five trucks. Oh, I call Carlisle. Carlisle's got to be one of the richest towns in Massachusetts. The average income, personal income's got to be right up there above Harvard and Conkett. So I talked to the Carlisle Fire Department. First of all, we have 2,800. They have 5,600 people, 5,602 to be exact. They have no town water. It's a call department. They have 55 road miles. We have 47. They've got five trucks. We've got six. They have, on four of the trucks, 2,700 gallons of water to get to the fire. We have about 5,000. They have a tanker that they call a truck that has 3,500 gallons on it. I don't know. I assume it's an old oil tanker or something that they've converted. But anyway, when I'm standing here and I'm looking at this, I wonder, "Why are we going in?" And I just got to end with this one thing, too. There's a lot of statistics here and that alone. Look at the truck itself, it doesn't, it doesn't wash. Look at the town, the statistics, compare it to other towns, there's no reason for the truck. The issue was brought up of how difficult it is to man departments. This kind of gets at the core of the issue. I've talked around, of course, you've been subjected to the rumor mill too, but actually looking at it. Other towns don't have any problem at all. Bolton typically has between seven and 10 volunteers show up at every call. We have a difficult time doing that. There are nine young men in Berlin, very much wanting to be on the fire department. All right? They gravitate to Bolton and the Boylston. They work with the Bolton department, they work with the Boylston department. What is this? This sounds bad. It isn't. I'll tell you, it boils down, and that's the issue, is the culture of the department. And it happens, I've seen it happen in sportsmen's clubs, you see it happen in businesses or whatever. But this desire to grow and be the best department and just, it's too much. And people say they don't want to be bothered with it. I ran into a young man in a coffee shop two weeks ago. His, he's, he's like a fourth generation of people in this town that have been deeply involved in public safety, both fire and police. And I says, I call him by name, I says, "Because I wanted to ask him, you know, you're on the fire department, aren't you? I had anything to do with that." That was his response. Now, I'm not at, despite all that, I couldn't have more respect for the gentlemanliness and the professionalism of the fire chief and for Rick Plummer than I have. But it's, this thing grows, and that's what it has. And frankly, the board of selectmen know everything that I said is true, and they're well aware of it. But we've got to have the leadership to bring these people together and to talk about it and get these problems solved. The fire department and the rescue squad run hot and cold. They hardly speak. We've got out-of-towners on the fire department when there are people in Berlin that would be on it if the culture was a little bit different. So it's hard to talk about these things in a little town, and people don't talk about them because they're so afraid of hidden personalities. I can only say that I just lay what I know on the table. I can only say that I just lay what I know on the table. If it comes out sounding negative, it isn't because I want to be negative, and I don't have anything personal against them, in fact, I have a total respect for the Fire Department. So I'm asking for a no vote. Now, closed by saying this. What is a no vote? First, I'll tell you what it is. It is not a vote against the Berlin Fire Department. I had the chief say to me, "Well, I hope you can support the department." I support the department. I don't support this truck, and I don't support some of the other things it's doing. A no is not necessarily permanently against this truck, which I think it should be, but nevertheless, that isn't what it is, it could come up again next year. A no vote is to do just what one of the previous speakers said, it's time that the selectmen pull people together. Did, you know, I'd like to see them to put the time in that I put in to get this information. If they have, and they've gone to other departments, other towns, and found out what I've said is incorrect, then I'll stand corrected. But there needs to be a lot of time to put in this. And one other last point you've got to consider. We have a unique situation in this town, and I think it's why we have this systemic issue, not a personality issue, not a, no question about the dedication. We have what's called a Board of Fire Engineers that oversee the Fire Department.
Walter?
They're virtually isolated.
Walter, you need to be getting done, but remember, we're still talking about a truck.
As I said, you would like to see us talk about a truck. I'm putting it in the context of what we're voting on. We have a Board of Fire Engineers, and they're virtually autonomous. The selectmen need to call them in, the selectmen need to get involved. So no vote is to look into that. And finally, a no vote is, if this isn't straightened out by next year, I'll have an article in the warrant to do away with the Board of Fire Engineers, put the Fire Chief underneath the selectmen, and if there are any selectmen that don't want to do their job, they can resign. But other chiefs report that the selectmen, they like it that way, they don't have any problems, they get along with much less costly equipment, they have volunteers galore, the Bolton Department is manned every weekend because your speed of core and camaraderie is so big in Bolton. But it isn't here, and it isn't because any-
Walter, can you please get done, please?
Very much, Mr. Plummer.
Everybody's heard enough of you. I think we have your point.
I would just like to make a few points. Over the past year, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Fire Engineers have worked together to come up with a final report about the Solomon Pond Mall Fire Protection Joint Task Force. And I will read you the findings, so for once and for all, we can put this to rest. Finding one. The current arrangements are consistent with the arrangements that served as operating assumptions during the mall mitigation process, and that were presented to the town during the original vote to approve the mall in March of 1994. It was expected that some measure of the fire protection costs would be covered by tax revenues from the new property. In other words, we expected that we would have to respond to the mall, and that some of the money that we got from taxes would be paying for that. The character and the incident of alarms at the mall are within normally expected parameters, and fire safety personnel have taken reasonable steps on an ongoing basis to minimize unnecessary responses. The number of calls to the mall has decreased, what did we decide? Because their alarm systems have become better, and because they know how to work things better. The currently operating agreement between Marlborough and Berlin is the most recent protocol signed by the Fire Chiefs of the respected municipalities. These agreements reflect the arrangements discussed in the first finding. And then it goes through the legal basement for the, legal basis for the current arrangements, which is Chapter 173 of the Acts of 2000. The cost and burden of providing fire protection services are as follows. The number of calls to the mall ranged from 60 to 80 per year over the five-year period from 2005 to 2009. So there was a mathematical average of approximately 1.15 to 1.53 calls per week. The average wage costs have been $6,446 a year over the five years. Additional expenses are less than $1,000 per year. And if we put that into perspective, 26% of the department incidents are at the mall, 18% of the wage budget, and 8.5% of the total Fire Department budget. And the mall property is assessed, well, it brings in about $1.159 million. Any modification of the current arrangement would require active negotiation with Marlborough and a willingness on the part of Marlborough to do without some or all of Berlin's current contribution. So we have looked into the mall, the numbers are what they should be. The arrangement, if we wanted to change it and not go to the mall at all, would need to be negotiated with Marlborough. And if I was Marlborough, I would say, "Well, if you want me to do the whole mall, give me some money." So is Berlin willing to do that? I don't know, we haven't looked into that any further. But that is the mall, and I, I'm kind of pissed right now, so. But this fire truck is, it's old, it's falling apart, you can't get pieces for it, it needs to be replaced. It's part of the capital plan, it's been worked into the plan, and I was on the Finance Committee during the no-wheels period. So the fact that we now have a plan for when our equipment will be replaced is a benefit to this town. It's things that bond rating companies look for, it keeps your equipment so that you're not at a point where it's just falling apart and you have to have a piece immediately. I don't know everything about fire protection, but I did, Walter, look into the various towns. I did it over the internet today, but-
Please, you'll address your comments to the Chair.
I'm sorry. We are not out of line in equipment. And I don't know why, when the Fire Department equipment comes up, it gets picked to death, but I, for one, speaking as myself, think that this should be passed. Thank you.
Others?
I'm known as the numbers person here, and I challenge everybody, finding-
Enter the mic.
The selectmen, to make the numbers work. And statistics are one thing that you have to be very expert at to get the right answers out of. And the survey that we just heard talked about made a huge mistake. And that is, the daytime and the nighttime population is larger, almost as large as Clinton, it's a lot larger than Bolton and Carlisle. Now, the population of Berlin is in the 2,900 range, but that's good for the schools, the tax collector, jobs that have to deal with 2,800 people in the town. Can anyone guess what the daytime protection count is that Berlin has to deal with? Because we have three large commercial projects, we have one of the most heavily traveled road in the state. It's somewhere in the range of 12,000, between $10,000 to $14,000, depending on what time of year you are. We're not Little Berlin, 2,800. We're going to be estimated in the 14,000 to 18,000 a day that we have to protect. So public safety is going to become a bigger part of your budget. It has to happen. You let in these malls, you let in River Bridge, we have this 40-unit place that's going in. Daytime, when everyone's asleep, there's 2,900 people. But public safety people have to protect huge amounts of people every day. And all the studies, you know, I'm laughing because my first go-around with the first Finance Committee many years ago involved the town of Carlisle, when they told us that we didn't need police at night, they could go home at 10 o'clock at night, and we could really get rid of a cruiser. And it was the Finance Committee back then that only used statistics, and they really didn't get behind the numbers like I did. I put more time into this than Walter has, than someone has. And the other thing that hasn't been told is, this, this thing is going to cost you, by my estimation, somewhere in the vicinity of about $50,000 for one more year. Now, would you rent a vehicle that's 24, 25 years old for about $50,000? The answer's no. You wouldn't do it at your house. And I'm an arch enemy of the Fire Department, by the way, I'm an EMT, you know, another rumor, that's kind of not true. So I urge you to vote for this. I wouldn't be here saying it. I've been very involved with the finances of the town for a long time, and sometimes you have to advise against the tide, but it would be financially foolish not to approve this truck. And I mean that. And I'm the guy that helped bring the town from junk bond rating status up to almost perfect. So I understand finances.
Yes, is that? Yeah, Chris? And George.
Chris Flynn, South Street. Just as a clarification, can you tell us of those 300 calls that you have a year, how many are medical calls and how many are fire calls?
Zero. We open them.
George Pendergast.
What was the answer?
I'm sorry.
The answer, oh.
I'm sorry, we don't do medical. The Rescue Squad does medical. With one exception, and that is, I think there's been a call, maybe one annually, that will pick up from Marlborough if we're both mutual aid at the mall and medical comes in at that very moment, they could divert us off to the medical end of that call because we're both there.
Good evening, George Pendergast, 43 Peach Hill Road, one of the deputy chiefs in the department, and 50-year member of the department. Been here for the first truck that Walter sent to New Hampshire for 500 bucks, when that was new, that was the coolest thing we ever had in town. We bought the present truck, that's the one that's going to be replaced, we hope. And I'd like to thank Walter and all the other people who took some time, so we get all our firefighters back to vote. Appreciate that. It's not my old department, folks. I'm sorry to say that what I lived for, participated in for 50 years, is not what I started with. It's evolved, we've changed. And we need the new ways and the new equipment to do it, the way to protect our kids, my family, my grandchildren, they all are here, and they deserve the very best protection for themselves personally, as well as yourselves in your own homes. Thank you.
Peter Hoffman. I'll make this quick, and it may be a naive question, but, and I think Judy touched on this. Where does 4.5%, 4.6% of our budget come from? And it's a significant hit on the budget. I support it as well, but I just wonder where such a large number comes from, and I wonder if someone could address more about this capital expenditure that you touched on. The cost of the, the $450,000, where does it come from? If somebody could just touch on that.
Scott?
The 450,000 for the truck, I just wonder where, that's, you know, nearly 5% of our total budget. So I'm just curious. Thanks.
All right, the funding for this, the 450,000 total, is going to come from two resources. The first 200,000 is free cash. That is the sum of money that, basically, the budget that you dealt with here today, we have to make estimates of what the income's going to be coming in. And then you appropriate the appropriate amount for the expenses. And so at the end of every fiscal year, you should run excess cash, there'll be cash that's left over, could be additional things that you, the new growth could be higher than estimated, basically, you have to underestimate. So at the end of the year, you end up with extra cash, that's referred to as the free cash, which we've typically rolled over from year to year and use that for part of the capital plan. The other 250,000 is stabilization. So we have not done this in the last few years, but that has been money from free cash that's been moved over to stabilization. And that has built up to a balance of like 1.2 million or so, what was that? $1.5 million in stabilization. And basically, that stabilization, as I said, has been built up over time, I think earlier tonight, when you closed out our old articles, for example, that had remaining funds, that was devoted to transfer it to stabilization. So those are the two pieces of funding. So those are things, the money that's already been taxed, so it's not like you're adding additional taxes, though you are obviously needing to continue to fund the plan over time. But those are funds that the town already has.
Richard Sardell, Financial Advisory Committee.
Well, be quickest I've ever been. Richard Sardell Baker Road, also on the Financial Advisory Committee. To elaborate a little bit on what I was just said about the funding. If you look at the capital plan on page 78, you'll see this spelled out, $200,000 is free cash this year. The remaining 250 is coming from stabilization, but will be repaid to stabilization over the next two years, so that we built into the capital plan repaying the stabilization fund over the next two years. What this does is save borrowing. So instead of borrowing on the market, we borrow from ourselves and save about $10,000. We talked about this last year.
Jeanne Stavell, Lady Summer Road. I just want to know, what will happen to fire engine number one if you get this new one? Is it being sold? Is there a trade-in value, or?
You've got to, enter the, enter the mic.
I'm sorry, what happens to fire engine number one if you get this new fire engine? Is it a trade-in? Is it sold?
Chief Ricard.
It's traded in for what, whoever wins the bid is willing to give us for it. I don't know if someone from the Truck Committee has an estimate that could give me?
It has no more of a value than $5,000.
Would you repeat that, Bruce, so people can hear about it?
Has no more of a value than $5,000. That's from someone who has 50-something years worth of background in the fire service, and we both review federal grants.
I make a motion to move the question-
Move the previous question. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, the motion has been made and seconded to move the previous question. That is, would cut off debate. It's a two-thirds vote, since you're taking away people's right to speak. I'll ask you to vote on the, in other words, if we vote yes on this with a two-thirds vote, we stop debate and we go and proceed to vote on the actual issue. Okay? This is only a procedural vote. Those in favor of stopping debate, say aye.
Aye.
Those who wish to continue debate, say no.
No.
The motion carries by a two-thirds vote. So we will now move to voting on the motion. The motion is to transfer the sum of $200,000 from free cash and to appropriate the sum of $250,000 from the stabilization fund for the purchase of a fire engine and related equipment to replace the current engine one. A 1976 fire engine said some to be expended by the Board of Selectmen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Can I please see the, a show of hands for the noes? Seven. Eight. Nine. Nine. I see nine no votes. The ayes please, with hands. I have enough on this side to make the two-thirds vote. So the passes by a two-third, the required two-thirds vote. Article 30, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds the sum of $700 for the purchase of a utility shed for custodial use at the town offices building or take any action relative thereto. Motion under article 30. Uh, Val?
I move to transfer the sum of $700 from free cash for the purchase of a utility shed for the custodian use at the town office building, said some to be expended by the Board of Selectmen.
The motion is to $700 from free cash. Do you want to stick to it?
Well, the janitor at the town hall, I mean, the municipal building, needs a, an extra building to put his snow blower and utensils that he can't keep in the, um, in the municipal building because the insurance company come along and told us that some, certain things cannot be in certain places and have to be separate. So that's the reason for the request for the shed.
Finance committee has published a positive recommendation. Anything else to be said? Anyone else want to, uh, speak on the motion? The motion is to transfer the sum of $700 from free cash for the purchase of a utility shed for the custodian use at town offices building, said some to be expended by the Board of Selectmen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye!
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 31, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds the sum of $8,000 for structural repairs to the former rescue squad building on West Street or take any action relative thereto. Judy Bowman.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over article 31.
Motion is to pass over. Do you want to comment anything further on that, Judy?
There's a problem with the foundation of this building and we need to look into it more.
Anything else to be said on the motion to pass over? Hearing nothing, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye!
Opposed, no. Unanimous vote to pass over. Article 32 is $33,000 for the police cruiser. Tom?
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer the sum of $33,000 from free cash for the purchase of a new police cruiser, said some to be expended by the selectmen.
That's $33,000 from free cash. Thomas? Finance committee's recommendation. Finance committee recommend?
Uh, this is again, it's part of the, uh, the cycle of replacing, uh, the police cars that are in the capital plan and it's in accordance with the capital plan.
Anything further to be said on this motion? Hearing nothing, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye!
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 33, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, transfer from available funds to sum of $26,000 for the purchase of, purchase of a new unmarked police cruiser. Thomas?
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer the sum of $26,000 from free cash for the purchase of a new unmarked police cruiser to replace the 2005 Ford 500, said some to be expended by the Board of Selectmen.
Motion made and seconded for $26,000 from free cash and it replaces the 2005 Ford 500. I always call on the maker of the motion first.
Oh, you do?
You're the maker of the motion.
I'm the maker of the motion, yes. This is, um, again, a replacement. Uh, this is the first sort of cycle replacement of the unmarked police cruiser. One of the reasons we moved to, uh, to do this in the past was you'll note that the unmarked cruiser is $67,000 less than the, than the marked police cruiser. So that's been, uh, an economy in many respects. It serves the same purposes, particularly during times of, uh, double coverage.
Finance committee has a positive recommendation. Anything further?
No.
Finance committee recommends. Is there anything else to be said on this motion? Yes. Skip Duggan.
I have, uh, Skip Duggan, 59 Ball Hill Road. Couple of questions. Is this the cruiser that is used by the police on patrol or is this a cruiser that is used by the police chief?
By the chief.
Our, our police chief makes well in excess of $100,000. He takes this vehicle home. Uh, I have never seen him here on the weekends, ever. Uh, many other towns have police chiefs that don't even have a vehicle. My taxes have doubled in this town. I don't make $100,000. I'm retired. My taxes have doubled. I, I think that spending this kind of money on a vehicle that's a 2005, I drive a car that has 150,000 miles on a 2002 Tahoe. Uh, it's not $450,000 that we spent, in my opinion, wrongly, on a fire engine. This is only $26,000. Our police chief does not go on calls other than emergency calls. He does not go on patrols. He does not do what our other police officers in this town do, which is interact with the people and the citizens. He's never here on the weekend. Those miles are driven from his house to here. I don't even think he should have a car, much less a new one.
Are there others that wish to speak on the motion?
I love you too.
Chief Road?
Just to correct, I do go on calls. I do go on patrol. We only run one officer here during the day shift and I am the second officer. I do come in on weekends on emergencies, but normally if they're on emergencies, I have weekends off. I work Monday through Friday. The mileage is what the mileage is. Most of the mileage is put on in the town, going to calls within the town. And any of you that have emergencies at your, your house during the week, most likely have seen me. So, I'm here, I'm here for you. If you don't want me to have a car, then don't give me a car. That's up to you. I work for you. But to say that I'm not here or that I don't respond to emergencies is not correct.
Are there others that wish to speak? If not, the motion is to transfer the sum of $26,000 from free cash for the purchase of a new unmarked police cruiser to replace the 2005 Ford 500, said some to be expended by the Board of Selectmen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye!
Those opposed, no.
No!
Motion carries in the affirmative. Article 34, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds the sum of $1,200 for the cultural council's use to award grants for providing cultural activities and programs for the residents of Berlin or take any action relative thereto. Yes?
Ron Plutnicki, 17 Brook Lane. I serve as treasurer for your cultural council. And Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer from available funds the sum of $1,200 for the cultural council use to award grants for providing cultural activities and programs for the residents of Berlin.
Uh, your, uh, source is not specific enough for us. What should that say?
Free cash.
Motion is made and seconded to transfer from free cash the sum of $1,200 for the cultural council's use to award grants for providing cultural activities and programs for the residents of Berlin.
Each year the state, uh, allot to cities and towns that have a working cultural council, uh, monies that specifically used to support programs that are in the area of the arts, music, history, culture, science. I'll give you an example. Uh, just a few weeks ago, the Berlin Friends of the Library sponsored a, um, big band concert at, uh, the 1870 Town Hall. Uh, the cultural council awarded a grant to the Friends so that they could fund this program. Over the last four years, the money that we've received from the state has been going down and down and down. We have already been alerted to the fact that we'll hit a major, get a major hit for FY12, as will all cities and towns. Uh, we are asking the town, uh, to support us with the $1,200 that we can supplement with the funds that we get from the state in order that we can grant as many, um, programs during FY12 that is possible during the, the year of our bicentennial celebration.
The finance committee has a, uh, positive recommendation?
Yes.
Finance committee recommends. Uh, Mr. Andrew?
I think the genesis of this special article is when the cultural commission came into the selectmen and, uh, indicated the state cuts and the selectmen, uh, very much encouraged them actually just to add this to the budget. So this might have been $1,200 of those big chunks of money that you voted at the end. But the cultural commission, I think, more power to them, wanted to put this to you as a separate question because it's something we haven't done before. And I think that's very admirable. And I think that the way that this money is spent is very admirable and it's a very small amount of money that I think has a very high impact on a lot of things that we like to encourage in this community. So I would certainly urge a positive vote.
Any others that wish to speak on the motion? Hearing no one. The motion is to transfer from free cash the sum of $1,200 for the cultural council's use to award grants for fin, providing cultural activities and programs for the residents of Berlin. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye!
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 35, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds, sum not to exceed $3,000 for the final development of the catch basin data layer of the town's GIS maps or take any action relative thereto. Mr. Andrew? Ms. Bowman?
He has some other important business, I'm sure.
I think his tires are going flat.
I move to transfer the sum of $3,000 from free cash for the final development of the catch basin data layer of the town's GIS maps, said some to be expended by the Board of Assessors.
Motion is made and seconded to transfer the sum of $3,000 from free cash for the final development of the catch basin layer, data, data layer of the town's GIS map, said some to be expended by the Board of Assessors. Judy?
I don't know anything about this, except they spray painted numbers on my catch basin in my driveway, but maybe one of the, the assessor or the Board of Assessor people would come up and talk about this?
Diane? Call an assistant assessor, Diane Peterson.
Last year you voted $21,000 for the creation of the catch basin, uh, data layers and what the company did was to, um, come into the town and actually GPS all the coordinates for every catch basin, um, the whole, the input, the output and all the pipe segmentation, um, in the whole town. Unfortunately, when Denny and I put this, um, the scope of the project of, out for RFP, the, um, he estimated there were just a few over 200 catch basins. And unfortunately, we came in over 400 catch basins with way more pipe segmentation than, uh, he realized. So what the town, what the, um, company did was because they are our map providers and do a lot of work, we negotiated, um, all of that extra work for an additional $3,000. They have very little to complete on the project, but they need to be paid. Thank you.
We have a positive recommendation from the finance committee. Is there any further comment? Anyone else? If not, I'll ask you to vote. The motion is to transfer the sum of $3,000 from free cash for the final development of the catch basin data layer of the town's GIS maps, said some to be expended by the Board of Assessors. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye!
Opposed, no.
No!
Motion carries in the affirmative. Article 36, see if the town will vote and raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds, sum not to exceed $100,000 for the purpose of renovating the tennis courts and basketball court on South Street. Mr. McKay?
Robert McKay, 32 Walnut Street Recreation Committee. Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over article 36.
Motion made and seconded to pass over.
The Bruins are headed into overtime. It's one way I feel to make this meeting go quicker. Um, what you see before you hear, the $100,000 request, um, the recreation committee has been kind of batting around the whole tennis court project for a couple of years now. Um, we haven't really done a complete, um, set of homework on this the way that we should. The $100,000, we did come up with some outside estimates to do basically a full refurbishment on the tennis court and the basketball court area. And the $100,000 is basically what it would cost to go through and do a complete fix. Um, we have been talking about everything from a Band-Aid type of, uh, asphalt in cracks and just getting repainted to, uh, the tennis court is sliding into the fishing pond and how do we stop it from sliding into the pond? Um, is it in the right location? So, it, it's something that's on our radar screen and, uh, one of the articles we do for, for the warrant, we, we did put this on there. Um, but as I said, we haven't really done a complete set of homework there. We do want people to know that, um, it's something that we are serious about doing. Um, when we do, um, decide on where we're headed, we're not necessarily going to be looking for the town to fund a full, uh, bill on this. Recreation has been doing a good job raising money, um, basically off of the use of South Commons that through the years we've gotten the playing surfaces in decent shape. Out behind the salt shed, there's been in excess of $50,000 spent on that field area, not a dime of Berlin's money to do that. Um, working with outside sports organizations who are looking for areas to play, we have been able to raise decent, decent revenues, so we've got the complex in decent shape. Um, in our town report, you can see we brought in over $8,000 in fees last year for working with the fields. And a portion of this money, we're building a treasury. We expect to put some of our treasury towards that. We do want to look towards outside donations, volunteers, and also what else the town can be providing for services on this project. So, um, basically putting the idea out there, hopefully there's enough people interested in Tennessee and basketball. Uh, you go over to Bolton and the basketball courts over there continually and you You go over to Bolton and the basketball courts over there are continually in use, and just like to see that type of a facility for our people in Berlin too. So this, this will be coming back in some way, shape, or form in the future. Go Bruins.
Anybody else want to speak to the motion to pass over? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimous vote. Article 37, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds, sum of money not to exceed $10,000 for labor and materials to rectify interior and exterior water issues at the Berlin Public Library, said sum to be expended by the library trustees. Bob McTag of the Library Trustees.
Bob McTag, 43 Lancaster Road. Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer the sum of $10,000 from free cash for labor and materials to rectify interior and exterior water issues at the Berlin Public Library, said sum to be expended by the library trustees.
That's $10,000 from free cash for this purpose.
As it alludes to in the article, we have interior and exterior water issues. Interior meaning leaks and drainage down the side of the building. Some of it is from gutters, bad timing when the fall isn't over, some leaves are in the gutters. We don't, haven't had an opportunity to clean yet and overflowed down the side of the brick building into the children's room. We'd like to rectify that permanently with some sort of gutter shields. And we have a drainage issue that has been existing at that library almost since its inception in the backyard, where if we get excessive rains like we did last year, it backs up to the children's room, children's room door. So we want to, with the help of the Highway Department, regrade the rear of the library so that that doesn't happen again. And had discussions with Denny, he'll help us out on that issue. So that's, that's what our intent is with this article.
Finance Committee, Finance Committee recommends. Any further comment? Anyone else want to speak on the motion? Hearing no one. I'll ask you to vote. The motion is to transfer the sum of $10,000 from free cash for labor and materials to rectify interior and exterior water issues at the Berlin Public Library, said sum to be expended by the library trustees. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 38, see if the town will vote to amend the zoning district map of the town of Berlin by removing the following parcels from the residential and agricultural zone and adding them to the agriculture, agricultural recreation conservation zone. And we have a list of different parcels on the assessors map. Tim Wheeler of the Planning Board.
Good evening, Tim Wheeler. I move that the town vote to amend the zoning district map by removing those parcels printed in Article 38 of the 2011 Annual Town Meeting Warrant from the residential and agricultural zone and adding them to the agriculture recreation conservation zone. May I give my report, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
The town of Berlin Planning Board held a public hearing on Tuesday, April 12th, 2011, at 8:00 PM at the Berlin Town Offices. The purpose of the public hearing was to provide interested parties with an opportunity to comment on Article 38 in the Annual Town Meeting Warrant to be held on May 2nd, 2011. At a planning board meeting on Tuesday, April 26th, 2011, the planning board voted five in favor, zero opposed to Article 38.
Okay, the motion is to amend the zoning district map by removing those parcels printed in Article 38 of the 2011 Annual Town Meeting Warrant from the residential and agricultural zone and adding them to the agricultural recreation conservation zone. Mr. Wheeler.
Over the years, we've added a number of parcels to what we call ARC, Ag, Rec, and Conservation Zone. Those have predominantly been lands that belong to the MDC or, in some cases, the Office of Dam Safety, Subri Valley Trustees, town of Berlin Conservation Lands, town of Berlin lands that aren't intended for serious municipal uses. This year, we've, we've got mostly housekeeping. There are a number of parcels we'll probably come forward with in the future that are conservation restricted lands, CRs that are a little more complex and defining, and we'll probably pursue that in the future years. But I can answer specific questions. What we've got here is parcels in green, some of them very, very tiny, particularly those that belong to Dam Safety that are located adjacent to parcels that we had zoned into ARC in years past. The few pieces in Hog Swamp, one is a piece that's been given to the Conservation Commission. Those are up where Barry's going to point now. And a number of pieces, three up there are tax titled parcels, but the notion that they'd ever be used for any serious municipal use is limited, so we decided that those would appropriately be moved into ARC. The biggest parcels, the Divine Parcel off of Linden Street, that the Conservation Commission has jurisdiction over, has been added into ARC as well. So we can speak specifically to parcels if you want us to, or if you have particular questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Mr. Bigford has a question.
Walter?
Yeah, Kennedy, you're trying to check out the CR at all.
Explain what, explain what he asked me.
I think he asked me if we've, if we've dealt with the Chedco CR at all and the conservation restriction. There's a number of CRs that, that we haven't decided to throw into ARC. We, we had talked to, usually what we do is we talk to landowners and say, if you have a CR, do you object? And essentially, in most cases, they don't. I, I think our earlier conversations about Chedco were complex because we really hadn't defined those parcels that were left out of the CR. And that's happened pretty completely now. So I think that at the next town meeting, we'll be looking at, there's probably half a dozen different CRs that we'll be including. But they'll involve meets and bounds. Most of these are the pure parcel. The assessor's map page and lot number match up, and we can just identify it very easily. When we come to a town meeting with a CR that's a parcel, a particular smaller parcel of a larger lot, it's going to be a little more complex, so we're saving those for a more exciting time.
If not, the motion is that the town vote to amend the zoning district map by removing those parcels printed in Article 38 of the 2011 Annual Town Meeting Warrant from residential and agricultural zone and adding them to the agricultural recreation conservation zone. This requires, because it's a rezoning in land, it requires a paper ballot by our town bylaws. And I will ask the following people if they will see the town clerk down in that corner of the room, and if they would help us with the paper ballot. Jane Sawyer, Bob McTag, Chris Keefe, Peggy Sardell, and Marcia Johnston. When you come to vote, the way you want to vote, this is the one that, that goes in this box. And you'll see Bob McTag holding it, and he's the fellow to give your, your vote to that you really want to vote. The other piece goes in the wastebasket. That comes later. We throw that out. We don't count. I'm going to ask that, as soon as they're ready to start the voting, we'll, I'm going to ask you to exit the room through the door in that corner and come through the hallway and back in the door you originally entered through, and we'll pass through so we can check off the people at the, at the checking station. And then we'll, then you'll be given your ballot, and you can give Bob your vote.
He's sending people out this door, and they're coming in, so they're going to be in the mood for action. Behind, with the people coming. Chris, come in. Yes. Jane.
I don't believe, I don't believe. No.
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 No. It's crazy.
The motion is made and seconded, the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by adding a new section 590. As printed in the 2011 annual town meeting warrant, with changing site plan review authority to zoning board of appeals wherever it appears.
Ron?
I'd like to give a planning board report. The Town of Berlin Planning Board held a public hearing on Tuesday, April 12th, 2011, at 8:00 p.m. at the Berlin Town offices. The purpose of the public hearing was to provide interested parties with an opportunity to comment on Article 39 on the annual town meeting warrant to be held May 2nd, 2011. At a planning board meeting held on Tuesday, April 26th, 2011, the planning board voted five in favor, zero opposed to support Article 39. This is one of the things that we have to do to become a green community, to be recognized by the state as a green community, is to provide the opportunity for installations of solar panel generating installations. I'm not going to say large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations again. What we have here is a bylaw that was crafted after a state model bylaw. It has the application, it has all the application rules, and what has to be done, maintenance of the installation, how it has to be maintained, and finally, how it has to be taken apart if this ever goes out of business. We also have a change to Section 320 of the bylaws, which provides that this type of installation will only be in limited business and limited industrial areas. And there's also the definition of large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations.
Are there others that wish to speak to this motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote. The motion is town vote to amend this Berlin zoning bylaw by adding a new section 590, large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations. Are there others that wish to speak to this motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote. The motion is town vote to amend this Berlin zoning bylaw by adding a new section 590, large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installations, as printed in the 2011 annual town meeting warrant, with changing site plan review authority to zoning board of appeals wherever it appears. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. And we go on to the results for Article 38. We had 72 ballots cast, 70 yes, 2 no. The article carries with the, or rather, the motion carries with the required two-thirds vote. Article 40, to see if the town will vote to amend this town Berlin zoning bylaw by deleting from Section 540 home-based contracting businesses, business sections 540.2, 540.6, and 540.8, and replacing them with the following, and some other changes in regard to that section of the zoning bylaw. Ron Vavruska of the Planning Board.
I move that the town vote to amend the Berlin zoning bylaw by deleting from Section 540 home-based contracting businesses, Section 540.2, 540.6, and 540.8, and replacing them with a new section 540.2, 540.6, and 540.8, as printed in the 2011 annual town meeting warrant, and by adding a new section 541, as printed in the 2011 annual town meeting warrant, but with the following change. Delete the figure 6,000 from the table and replace it with the figure 10,000.
Motion is made and seconded, the town vote to amend this Berlin zoning bylaw by deleting from Section 540 home-based contracting business, Section 540.2, 540.6, and 540.8, and replacing them with new sections 540.2, 540.6, and 540.8, as printed in the 2011 annual town meeting warrant, and by adding a new section 541, as printed in the 2011 annual town meeting warrant, but with the following change. To delete the figure 6,000 from the table and replace it with the figure 10,000. Ron?
The planning board report is that the planning board held a public hearing on Tuesday, April 12th, 2011, at 8:00 p.m. in the Berlin Town offices. The purpose of the public hearing was to provide interested parties with an opportunity to comment on Article 40 on the annual town meeting warrant. At a planning board meeting held on Tuesday, April 26th, 2011, the planning board voted five in favor and zero opposed to Article 40. The planning board's thoughts on amending this or changing this part of the bylaw is that home-based contracting business should be related to the size of the property that it's on. Therefore, that is why we have this proposed table that gives a size and a number of employees based on the land. And we also added a sign portion of it to show that the sign should only have the address and the name of the business. We didn't want any advertising signs in a residential area.
Is there anything further to be said on the motion? Yes.
Sorry, I know it's late. I'll be brief. Buzz Harris, 21 Village Lane. So this is only impacting...
A little closer to the mic, please.
Yes, sir. So this is only impacting home-based contracting businesses, right? So if you're not a contractor, you work for yourself, there's no particular impact?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Are there others? No, you've got to come up and talk. Here.
Anthony DeCiro, 155 Pleasant Street. I was at the public hearing, and there was a lot of talk about what to do about people who don't have lots under 200, that have 200 feet of frontage. And there was a lot of talk of how the frontage seemed to be an arbitrary requirement. So I'd like to make a motion to pass over it because the frontage thing doesn't tie well to the size of the lot. Can I do that?
Just a second. Come up here. We have a motion to pass over Article 40. Is there a second? Motion is made and seconded, pass over Article 40. Is there any discussion of the motion to pass over? Ron?
Yes, as I had in my report, that we did have a public hearing. We took into consideration what the public had to say, and we made a vote. We did make one change from the public, is that we had a 6,000-pound trailer, and somebody pointed out it could be a 10,000-pound trailer, that a 12,000-pound truck could tow a 10,000-pound trailer. So we made that change. So we held the public hearing, and I don't think we should pass this over. You just vote on it.
Okay. Is there anyone else that wants to speak on the motion to pass over? Are you coming to speak, Peter? Are you coming to speak? This is about passing over.
Yeah. Could one of the planning board members talk about the content of what was discussed at the meeting? If there were many people that appeared, what the consensus was? I know what your vote was, but I don't think you've told the audience what transpired at the meeting to give the audience a bit of feedback so they can judge their decision on that. Thanks.
Ron?
The public hearing, it was clarification on what we meant by going to size. There was some confusion as to whether home contractors needed to go and comply with this. I'll let in any other planning board members.
Was there a consensus of people in the hearing about it? Tim?
Well, I think that if you're a contractor that's home-based, there's been a general sense that this bylaw interferes with your activities. I think what the planning board has tried to point out over the years is that if you were in a position where you wanted to exchange ownership of your business, and you didn't have the protection that this bylaw provides, if you were, or the person that was prepared to purchase your business and your property were to go to the bank, the bank might be reluctant to enter into an agreement with you because you wouldn't have the protection of a bylaw such as this to operate in a residential zone. When we've attended public hearings that have been held by the Board of Appeals, when individuals have come in to apply for a special permit to operate a home-based contracting business in the residential zone, we've heard from neighbors who have said, in particular cases where lots are significantly small, that there ought to be a little more concern about what's being allowed. So the planning board's observation from those hearings and from the public hearing we held back in March is that there's this conflict between abutters and operators. And what we're trying to do is make sure that we don't throw this bylaw out completely at some point, that we really fine-tune it so it can satisfy the needs of citizens on both sides of the fence. And that's what we're trying to do here. If you're operating on a lot that's less than 80,000 square feet, which is what the standard-sized lot has to be today, I think the board's feeling was, from the public hearings we'd attended at the Board of Appeals it held, was that the number of vehicles needed to be restricted from what has been allowed in the bylaw as it stands at this point. So essentially, that's what we're here to try to provide an opportunity for. I think the best way to deal with this is to vote on it. If you don't think that this is appropriate, you know, don't vote for it. If you think it's appropriate, vote for it. But to pass over doesn't, to me, make a lot of sense. I mean, vote for it, or don't vote for it. Just let's move on.
Right now, we're talking about the motion to pass over, and that's what our vote is going to be taken on. If you vote to pass over, it... If you vote to pass over, it takes this one off the table for this meeting, and we go on to the next article. If you vote no, then we'll go back to the main motion and perhaps vote on it. So the motion is to pass over. All those in favor of passing over Article 40, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to passing over Article 40, say no.
No.
The noes have it. We will go back to the original main motion. That is to amend the zoning bylaw as described in Article 40, except that we're deleting the figure 6,000 from the table and replacing it with the figure 10,000. Is there anything further to be said on the main motion to amend the zoning bylaw? Yes? Richard Sardell.
It's okay to bruins one in overtime so we can keep going. I just have a quick question. Is a vehicle defined somewhere in the zoning laws that we don't see right here? In other words, if somebody has a payloader, a truck and a trailer to put the payloader on, are they exceeding the allowed vehicles here? Or is, is, in other words, what's a vehicle?
A vehicle is defined by the motor vehicle laws in the state as a vehicle. What you're talking about is machinery.
Is it self-propelled?
It's a vehicle that drives on the road. That's a vehicle, as we see it from the state law. If you put it on a trailer, then it's a trailer, and the trailer has a gross weight. That's controlled by this bylaw.
Peter?
Just one more quick question. Was it intentional that the first section is "or," and the second and third are "and"? Less than 80,000 feet or less than 200? And then the other two are "and's"? Is that intentional? Thank you.
One place I could point out immediately is the 26,000 pounds gross weight for the truck, and that's because 26,000 pounds are over, you need a commercial license, and that was our device line, so it had to be less than 26,000. You're talking about the lot size?
Yeah, we get lot size. Is the first section "or," the second "and"?
His latest question is about lot size.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the vehicle.
In the first box, it's "or" for the area.
Right. Less than, because what we have now is a standard lot is 80,000 square feet and 200 feet of frontage or more. So therefore, we're talking about lots here that are smaller than the standard lot. So that's why we put "less than."
So that means that if either of those options trigger, the person is qualified or not qualified to get the permit?
Oh, no, they can have a, if they're less than 80,000 square feet or less than 200, then they fit into that first box with a one vehicle and the one trailer and the one employee.
So the other two categories, it has to be both?
That's correct.
Anyone else? Oh, Duncan Baum.
Yeah, Duncan Baum, 15 Crosby Road. The second line in this table, if you have a lot with 200 feet or greater, and say you have 300,000 square feet of land, where do you fall in on this table? You don't fall anywhere because you've got to be, you don't have 300 feet, so you can't go down to the bottom one. You've got, say, 300,000 square feet of land, but you only have 200 feet of frontage. You don't fall into any of these categories.
You would fall in the second category, from what you say. Yeah, okay. I guess.
So, I mean, where do you fall? Can you not do it? Can you do it? There's nothing here that would help the guy that I told him about the field. You know, where are the issues after that?
I wish you had the hearing.
I wish I was still at grade school.
What's that?
Let's see.
Is that a variance case? Lynn Ryan of the Zoning Board of Appeals?
I think it's scary, but I think I understand it. If you have less than 80,000 square feet or less than 200 feet of frontage, so the first category, you have to have both. I mean, you have to have both. You have to have a minimum of 80,000 square feet, or you have to have the 200 feet of frontage. In order to move up to any of the other categories, that's the base, you have to have both. So if you're 80,000 to 160,000 square feet, and you have a minimum of 200 feet of frontage, you can move from slot one up to slot two. If you want to move up to slot three, you've got to have greater than 160,000 square feet and greater than 300 feet of frontage. I think this is a good thing as someone, I'm not speaking for the board, but as someone on the Zoning Board of Appeals, there are some third of an acre lots where, you know, folks wanted to put in a contracting business in the middle of a residential development, and it's probably just not appropriate. It's very difficult. But if you have, if you are in a residential area, and you do have the required lot size or and frontage, then you could do this and probably not bother your neighbors.
Someone else want to speak to it? Chris Keefe.
Chris Keefe, 20 Bailey Road. I apologize for not being able to come to the hearing. We have too many school meetings. Wasn't, I think it was a Wednesday, probably. Was it? I have a house lot that is three-quarters of an acre, and we've had the issue of someone wanting to put in a home-based contracting business next door and in the neighborhood. And this isn't, I mean, this helps out a bit, but on a three-quarter acre lot, which is what? 3,000? 30,000 square feet. You can't hide a home-based contracting business in a neighborhood where all of the lots are that size. So rather than have to go through the process for someone who wants to put a business in this type of neighborhood, it'd be easier for everybody, I think, if you just said, "Under one acre, you can't do it." Or under, you know, pick a number. Otherwise, the, I think you've got a lot of people thinking they can get around this when they move to Berlin. They're going to buy a small lot because it's less expensive, and then put the home-based contracting business right in the middle of it.
Well, we did consider that, and that's why for a small lot like you're speaking of, it's just one vehicle of 12,000 pounds gross weight, and that 12,000 pounds gross weight is, if you've seen any trucks that contain a workshop within the back, a little workbench, that's the type, that's the type of thing we're speaking of. But the bylaw, we didn't change the bylaw part that says the external appearance and general aspect of the building so used shall be in conformity with the residential character of the neighborhood. So this type of thing still has to go through site plan approval, and that's why we have a Zoning Board of Appeals, which does a wonderful job. But we didn't want to have somebody who had a small lot and just has a little truck that they shouldn't be able to operate that truck out of their home.
Noel Rosenberg, 21 Village Lane. Regarding the technical question that was raised just a little while ago about lots that are 200 feet or greater, that are, but not 300, and are, but above 160,000 square feet, is it possible to amend the motion to drop the, okay. Someone has helpfully written such a motion, so I will do it. I move to strike the figure to 160,000 from the table 541, and replace it with "or over."
What's this? Or what?
Or "over."
We have a motion to strike the figure to 160,000 from the table 541, and replace it with "or over." So it'll say 80,000 or over square feet. Okay? Is there anything to be said in regard to this amendment, the motion to amend? Okay, then I'm going to ask you to vote on the amendment, which will change this to say 80,000 square feet or over. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries in the affirmative. Okay, so we have an amendment there. So now we go back to the main motion, and that was as it was originally made with all the sections changed and with the figure 6,000 deleted and replaced with the figure 10,000. That's in the first line of the table. And now we have this change in the second line, which is to take out to 160,000 and make it "or over," and that is in the second line. Is there anything else to be said on the total main motion now? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. I declare that a two-thirds majority vote. Motion passes. At this point, we have, it's after 11:15. After 11 o'clock, I am supposed to take a vote as to, once the piece of business that was on the table at 11 o'clock is completed, which it now is, is to take a vote on whether to continue this evening. At this point, we have Articles 41 through 50 that we would be acting on, that's still left for us to act on in the regular business session. The question is if you, at this time, I'm going to ask you to vote as to whether you would prefer to adjourn and do it later, perhaps tomorrow night, or whether you would prefer to continue. Those in favor of adjourning till later to complete it, please say aye.
Aye.
Those in favor of continuing and trying to finish up tonight, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we move ahead and see if we can't zip through the rest of these and get out of here. Article 41, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw, section 332, vote floor area limitation by deleting the current text and adding this other language. Charles Eger of the Planning Board.
Charles Eger, South Street, the Planning Board. Article 41, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw, section 332, floor area limitation, by deleting the current text and adding the following: Except for fur farms and accessory apartments, no accessory use shall occupy more than a combined total of 35% of the gross floor area of the principal building.
Motion is made and seconded that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw, section 332, floor area limitation by deleting the current text and adding the following: Except for farms and accessory apartments, no accessory use shall occupy more than a combined total of 35% of the gross floor area of the principal building. Mr. Eger.
The Town of Berlin Planning Board held a public hearing on Tuesday, April 12th, 2011, at 8:00 PM in the Berlin Town offices. The purpose of the public hearing was to provide interested parties with an opportunity to comment on Article 41 on the annual town meeting warrant, to be held May 2, 2011. At a Planning Board meeting held on Tuesday, April 26th, 2011, the Planning Board voted five in favor, zero opposed to Article 41.
Do you want to say anything further about the motion?
We kind of hemmed and hawed over this one. It was, what was it, 25% before, and we upped it to 35%. This probably needs some more work, but we didn't want to spend more time on it at this time. We were busy with a couple of other ones, like the previous articles. So we'll be talking about this at a future time, but hopefully this is going to work a little better than it was.
Does anyone else want to speak to this motion? If not, the motion is amend the zoning bylaw, section 332, floor area limitation, and it is as was printed in the warrant. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by the required two-thirds majority. Article 42, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw, section 523.2, by deleting the current text and adding the following. Tom?
Tom Sanford, Sawyer Hill Road, member of the Planning Board. Article 42, I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw, section 523.2, by deleting the current text and adding the following: 523.2, the apartment shall have its own separate entrance from the outside, but shall be attached to the primary residence by a habitable space.
Motion is made and seconded to amend the zoning bylaw, section 523.2, as it was in the warrant.
Mr. Moderator. The Town of Berlin Planning Board held a public hearing on Tuesday, April 12th, 2011, at 8:00 PM at the Berlin Town offices. The purpose of the public hearing was to provide interest-
The purpose of the public hearing was to provide interested, interested parties with an opportunity to comment on article 42, on the annual town meeting warrant to be held May 2, 2011. At a planning board meeting held on Tuesday, April 26th, 2011, the planning board voted five in favor, zero opposed, to support article 42. What we've tried to do was to close a loophole that people have been seeming to use, where they've been attempting to put multiple dwellings on a single lot. Uh, and what this will do was, if you're going to create an accessory apartment or an apartment, it has to be attached to the dwelling by a habitable space.
Anything further to be said on this motion? Hearing nothing, I'll ask you to vote. The motion is to amend section 523.2, as printed in the warrant. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by the required two-thirds vote. This is about yard and barn sale signs. Janet Campbell, the Planning Board.
Article 43, I move that the town vote to amend the towny, Town of Berlin zoning bylaw by adding, adding the following as section 935 yard garage or barn sale signs. 935 yard garage or barn sale signs, 935 dash one. Such temporary signs shall conform to section 914 point one. 935 point two, such signs shall be removed within three days of completion of such sale, and failure to do so may place the sign owner in violation of the sign by law and liable to a fine as specified in section 1320.
Well, this is a, a motion to amend the zoning bylaw by adding a section 935 yard garage or barn sale signs, and the rest of it is, is printed in the warrant. We note the addition of the word garage in a couple of spots here.
Didn't want to leave them out. The Town of Berlin Planning Board held a public hearing on Tuesday, April 12th, 2011, at 8:00 PM in the Berlin Town offices. The purpose of the public hearing was to provide interested parties with an opportunity to comment on article 43, on the annual town meeting warrant to be held May 2, 2011. At the planning board meeting held on Tuesday, April 26, 2011, the planning board voted five in favor, zero opposed to article 43.
Anything further to be said on the motion? You want to explain anything about it or not? Anybody want to speak to this motion? If not, the motion is to amend the zoning bylaw by adding section 935 yard garage or barn sale signs. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by the required two-thirds vote. Article 44, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Laws, chapter 61, 2A, 61A, section 4A, and 61B, section 2A, about the classification of land for tax purposes. Carl Wickstrom of the Agricultural Commission.
264, Land Industry. Mr. Moderator, article 44. I move to accept the provisions of Mass General Laws, chapter 61, section 2A, chapter 61A, section 4A, and chapter 61B, section 2A, in order to place such classified land in class two, open space category, for tax classification purposes.
Motion is made and seconded, and it is substanti, it is the same as the article reads. Carl.
Thank you, Mr. Ma, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Last year, the Selectmen established a dual tax rate system in the town. They established a residential rate of $13.89 and a commercial rate of $14.84. That was for fiscal year 2011. Under a dual tax rate system, the assessors are required to classify farmland, forestry land, and recreational land as commercial land. As a result of that, those landowners paid an additional $11,831.29 in taxes, above and beyond that which they would have paid had they been taxed at the residential rate. The legislators in Boston recognized that this would be a problem for the, for the farming community, as well as the other, uh, landowners within the categories we're discussing here this evening. So in 2006, they passed chapter 394. That law allows the towns, or gives the towns, the option to classify farmlands, forestry land, and recreational lands for tax purposes as open spaceland. The tax rate for the open spaceland is the same as the tax rate as the residential property rate is. So with passage of this article this evening, the chapter landowners will then be paying taxes at the same rate as a residential rate. So the Agricultural Commission would ask for your support and approving of this article. The Selectmen have approved this, agree with this article as well. I think it's very important to do what we can to try to maintain the open space in town, and this is one way of doing it. And it's an economical way of doing it as well.
Anyone else want to speak to article 44? I'm going to ask you to vote. As soon as I find the right motion. There it is. To accept the provisions of Mass General Laws, chapter 61, section 2A, chapter 61A, section 4A, and chapter 61B, section 2A, in order to place such classified land in class two open space category for tax, tax classification purposes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 45, to see if the town will vote pursuant to Mass General Laws, chapter 40, section 3, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to amend and abandon a drainage easement and release any right, title, or interest that may be held by the town on a portion of land owned by Craig C. and Cheryl A. Gibbo, located on Coburn Road, and so on. So motion under article 45.
I move to authorize the Board of Selectmen pursuant to Mass General Laws, chapter 40, section 3, to abandon a drainage easement and release any right, title, or interest that may be held by the town of a portion of land owned by Craig C. and Cheryl A. Gibbo, located on Coburn Road. Said drainage easement is shown as 20.00 drainage easement on a plan entitled Plan Showing Drainage Easement, prepared by Clyde R. Wheeler, dated May 28, 1980, and recorded at the Worcester District Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 563, Plan One.
It's the same motion the article is. Go ahead.
This releases an easement on a piece of property that the town no longer needs the drainage easement on.
Anyone else want to speak, speak to this motion? Hearing no, and I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 46, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Berlin Conservation Commission to enter into a 20-year lease for agricultural purposes on approximately seven acres of land currently in agricultural use on the Musi Woods Conservation Land located on Lancaster Road. Take any action relative thereto. Article 46.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town meeting vote to authorize the Berlin Conservation Commission to enter into a 20-year lease for agricultural purposes on approximately seven acres of land currently in agricultural use on the Musi Woods Conservation Land located on Lancaster Road.
Motion is made and seconded, and it's the same language as the, as the article. Thomas?
Yeah, so we don't, I think, have anybody from Concom here, but my understanding of this is that this land-
Move the mic so you're getting into it a little better.
Oh, yes. My understanding here is that this is land that is currently open and in Hayfield and in accordance with their policy to keep a mixture of land and to keep open vistas open. They wish to enter into a lease so that somebody will maintain this land in its agricultural use during that period of time. Is that fair?
Anyone else? Yes.
Bill Anderson, Peach Hill Road, is there a cost of this lease? How much is this lease going to cost? How much revenue?
That, under this motion, that would be in the discretion of the Conservation Commission.
Anyone else want to speak?
I'm telling it here, so.
Okay, the motion is that the, that we authorize the Conservation Commission to enter into a 20-year lease for agricultural purposes on approximately seven acres of land currently in agricultural use on the Musi Woods Conservation Land. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. This is a simple majority. We have a simple majority. Article 47, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Conservation Commission to apply for a matching grant. Uh, this is a, a, an article that deals with the, with a piece of land in which I have a personal financial interest. So I'm going to step down from the podium, and the town clerk will provide over election of a moderator for the, for this article.
Okay, now that he's safely down. God, I've always wanted to be here. Anyway, I just want to take nominations for who will be the moderator in his absence. Judy.
I nominate Tim Miller to be moderator.
Okay. Is there anybody else's name? Come on now, don't be shy. Okay. Could I have a vote for Tim? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
You there. Article 47. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Conservation Commission to apply for a matching grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in connection with the acquisition of 62 acres of conservation land located on Ball Hill Road at the Northborough Line, or take any action relative thereto. Do I have a motion? Mr. Andrew? Mr. Temporary Moderator. I move that the town authorize the Conservation Commission to apply for a matching grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in connection with the acquisition of approximately 57 acres of conservation land located on Ball Hill Road at the Northborough Line. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion you'd like to lead, sir? First of all, you will have noted that instead of 62 acres, it says 57 acres. That is because a portion of the land is located in Northborough, and the state will not provide a matching grant to Berlin in connection with the acquisition of land that is in Northborough. So we have deducted from that 62 acres, which will eventually come to us, the five that is located in Northborough. This is a purchase of land, um, the, the land is contiguous and also in close proximity to one of our major conservation areas, the Mount Pisgah area. It really completes that, um, that quadrant of, of conservation land. It, um, it is being, it is under, currently under purchase and sale for $400,000. That money would be taken out of mall mitigation funds that have been already voted and appropriated as part of the mall mitigation package into the conservation account. The Commonwealth is matching at, I believe, 59%, but in the, certainly between 55 and We stand a very, very good chance of getting this grant for the simple reason that we did have money, as the sort of economy has turned down, and as other towns are not willing to put money up for the purchase of conservation land, and we were fortunate enough to still have money in the conservation fund to purchase this. It means that we are competing against a very, very small field in regards to this, this grant. So if we are successful in this, it will mean that we will acquire 57 acres of land in Berlin, and also protect another five that are contiguous across the line in Northborough for something in the vicinity of a quarter million dollars, which is a very good deal for the town indeed. Thank you. Peter Hoffman. In order to get it on cable and recorded, it has to be through this mic system. Thank you. Peter Hoffman, since Barry was nice enough to admit whatever his connection is, what is the connection? Barry's the owner. Ah, okay. That would be a connection. Thank you. Yep. Other comments or questions? It's important to note, I think, that initially we got a million and a half dollars from mall mitigation for open space, and we've gotten $50,000 a year for 30 years. We're probably 17 years into that? 16 or 17 years?
No, I think it started in 98, when the mall opened.
96, 96 it opened.
96.
Yeah, so that might, the Conservation Commission has made, you know, wise use of this funds, and there's still some to come in, although they're talking about ways to leverage that. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Um, it's unanimous vote. Thank you very much. And I'll invite the moderator back. He evidently puts a U. Is that right?
Yes.
I'm learning his code here. I'm learning his code here. Can't find it.
Okay, forty-seven, forty-eight. He's right, I can't find it either. Okay, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass General Laws, chapter thirty-two B, section two, which states that a member of a call fire department or other volunteer emergency service agency serving a municipality shall be considered an employee allowing for participating in the town's insurance programs on a charge of one hundred percent of the premium or take any action relative thereto. Dennis Faribault of the Rescue Squad.
Mr. Moderator. I move to accept provisions of Mass General Laws, chapter thirty-two B, section two, which states that a member of a call fire department or other volunteer emergency service agency serving a municipality shall be considered an employee allowing for participation in the town's insurance program at a charge of one hundred percent of the premium. Volunteers on these squads cost towns that have them about a third of what it costs towns that have full-time fire and rescue personnel. And because of that, the state came up with some rules that could be voted in as a local option, if you chose, that are no cost to the town other than the treasurer and the town accountant's time to track the participation and collecting the money. And what this would allow is anyone who is under twenty hours, which is usually the trigger to qualify for town benefits, to come on at no cost. But typically hasn't been used in the past because private companies and private associations have been cheaper than what municipality programs cost. So if you remember the Chamber of Commerce, or there's all these different organizations. Typically, you could be self-employed or volunteer, you'd get it privately. Unfortunately, in the last two or three years, the insurance premiums for those type of policies have rocketed, averaging about fifty percent a year. So now, the very expensive Town of Berlin plan and in other towns is a little bit cheaper than these small business plans. And so it's something that's been dusted off and is something that I'm recommending because it's actually helping the town get to the minimums that we need should we leave the current carrier we have. Most carriers won't take the Town of Berlin because we're under that fifty threshold. We're too small. So this is a good thing. You're not going to see a whole lot of people getting on. It's usually people that are, you know, the carpenter or plumber, that type of thing. It would become effective July first. It would affect all volunteer, call paid. You have to be careful. Firemen, part-time policemen, and the EMT rescue members. No cost to the town other than my time and the town accountant's time. And we're underpaid, so it's a really good deal for you guys.
Finance committee's comment? You have a positive recommendations or anything else you want to say? Anyone else want to speak to the motion? Chief Ricardo of the Fire Department.
Yeah, just a quick question, Dennis. Should have had you stay up here to answer it. Is this an individual plan? Or can someone buy a family plan? They're allowed to? Both. Okay, they're allowed to buy both. That's just one.
Anyone else? If not, I'll ask you to vote. The motion is to accept the provisions of Mass General Laws, chapter thirty-two B, section two, which states that a member of a call fire department or other volunteer emergency service agency serving a municipality shall be considered an employee allowing for participation in the town's insurance program at a charge of one hundred percent of the premium. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries in the affirmative. Article forty-nine. Scott Schultz?
I move to appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand dollars from the stabilization account to be used toward the reduction of the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve tax rate.
Motion is made and seconded to appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand dollars from the stabilization account to be used toward the reduction of the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve tax rate. Want to speak to it, Scott?
As mentioned earlier, this funds several years ago, we were pushing from free-